We'll call the last meeting of Louisville City Council to order. Do we have a forum present?
We do have a forum present. I do not see Deputy Mayor Cora-Tam Green yet, so we'll watch for her to come in.
Okay. First item of the workshop with discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda.
Mr. Councilman Jones, can you please make yourself visible? Just in case I'm not loud enough, Councilman Jones, can you please make yourself visible? We'll need to be able to see you.
So we just have to start facsimile.
Mr. Marshall is not present until we can see him. We have a forum. Yeah, we've got a forum.
You ready to go?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. First item is discussing the regular agenda and consent agenda items. Review of legislative agenda. Donna?
We could walk through the agenda first. And I do have an item on item two. I would like Jason Moore to present information about the expansion of the Old Town Ters. If we could do that first.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'll share my screen. Okay, is the PowerPoint visible?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so this is a Ters number one, which is our Old Town District. And we are proposing to expand both the boundaries and the term of the Ters. And this has been expanded once before in terms of the term. And so this is actually what we call the third amended plan, project plan and finance plan. And so tonight on your agenda is a consideration of a resolution calling a public hearing for December 7th to consider this item as an ordinance. So just to refresh your memory, we talked about this back in December of 2019 to expand this, and you gave us direction to proceed. And so we've taken this item to the Ters Board back in July of 2020, and they did approve, from their perspective, from the Board of Directors, they did approve the expansion and the consideration of the amended project plan and project finance plan. And so this item will go before you on December 7th through a public hearing for consideration. And just a brief overview of what this is, you can see the light gray on the map, that's the existing Ters along with the right of ways of all the streets. Those were eligible in the original Ters. And that was about 314 acres total that was located within the Ters boundary. And we're proposing an additional 166 acres for consideration. And this northern triangle encompasses Legacy Point, Old Town Station, those projects north of College, all the way to Mill Street, along Keely. And then this also incorporates on the eastern tract, everything east of the rail tracks between College to Valley Ridge Boulevard down to Business or the 121, which encompasses the TOD master plan. And so this additional expansion will facilitate and enrich the opportunities for investment and infrastructure improvements to this district. So just to give you a quick snapshot of why it's important to add this in, if you look at where our Ters currently expires in 2028 and the current boundaries, with the projected projects within the existing boundaries through this term, we'll generate another $16 million that will be available for projects. And that's the city's 100% increment in the zone, as well as the county has an 80% participation rate through the end of this calendar year, and they'll drop to 75% through the end of the term. And so with those two entities combined, we'll cumulatively add $16 million available for projects. So if we expand the zone, the boundaries, and we expand the term another 10 years, and we suggest that the county would participate at a 50% rate, we have met about a year ago with the county officials to discuss this, but we'll go back to them in the very near future to schedule times to discuss. But the project would pick up an additional $30 million. So if we don't do anything, we'll end up with $16 million available for projects. If we do this expansion, we'll increase that amount up to 46. That's an increase of $30 million by doing this expansion, and mainly because you increase the duration, but also to pick up those existing projects that are coming into the pipeline north of College Street. And so it's a significant increase, it's a significant positive impact to the Ters. And what we propose is if you consider this resolution tonight, it calls the public hearing for December 7th. We would then move to discuss further with Denton County officials sometime in December. We're working on that meeting now. And then consider updating an interlocal agreement to an amendment to their agreement sometime in the first quarter of 2021. So that's the timeline. Those are kind of a quick overview. I can answer any questions you have at this time.
Does anybody have any questions?
All right, thank you.
I have here none.
Head on that, Mayor.
That's it.
Mayor, I do have an item on the item five, which is our interlocal agreement with Denton County on ambulance service. We accidentally had the backup is really, we duplicated the backup from four, which is the fire service agreement, and put that on five also. So Julie did send you the ambulance agreement that you now have before you.
It's also available on our website under the City Secretaries page, if anyone in the public wish to look at that.
And that's all we have for consent agenda, Mayor.
Okay. Now we're down to the consent agenda. Anybody have anything on the consent agenda? So we're down to item seven under regular hearings.
Council, I do have Gary Henderson here with us tonight, virtually here with us tonight, and he can answer any questions you might have on item nine. This was somewhat of a unique situation with money that became available, and a grant application had to be submitted prior to the council meeting, so I did sign an intent letter so that we could make sure Gary's application was complete. So that's a little unusual for us to do that, but either Gary or myself can answer any questions you might have on this grant application in the city's role.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, item nine, go to item 10. Any questions on that? Now we're down to the report section, and City Manager can have a few, do you have the two items on here?
Yes, sir. We can discuss that when we get to that later, Mayor, if that's okay.
Okay. And is that it for the agenda?
We just need to go back to the workshop. Yes, sir, that would be it for agenda.
Okay. We'll go back to the item B. Is that where you're going?
Yes, sir. So this is a review of our legislative agenda. We bring this to you every two years before we start the legislative session. We do have both of our consultants, our legislative consultants with us tonight, and I'd like to start with them. I know Bert and Brandy Berg, Bert Solomon's and Brandy, would like to talk with you a little bit about what they see as our challenges as we move into this next legislative session. So I'd like to give them a little time to address the council before James starts walking through some of the basics with the legislative agenda this year.
Go ahead.
Bert, I guess we'll turn it to you first. You just need to unmute.
We cannot hear you, so go ahead and unmute.
Pete's asking him if he can unmute you.
There you go. I hit unmute, okay. All right, well, this is, you know, this is only like the third time I've had one of these virtual deals. I assume we're going to have a lot more of them, and I'll get much better at it as we get into session. Let me, you know, I always enjoy coming and talking to you a little bit because, you know, right now it's like spring training. We're kind of hopeful, but we're, you know, got some anxiety too. I think all the cities do in particular, but we're about where we were last session in makeup of the members, and James can go into some of that. Prefiling has already started on bills, and some bills have already started affecting probably all the cities to some degree, but not dramatically at this point. Nothing's going to occur for quite a while. Right now, the overriding problem is, is that nobody knows what, how the session is going to look. This is like a first for 100 years. I mean, I don't know what they did in the pandemic in 1918, but, you know, none of us were around then. But at the end of the day, no one knows yet. They're studying it, they're talking about it among themselves. Brandy and I have talked a little bit. We anticipate there's going to be some limited access. I mean, they talk as if they want to, you know, it's the people's house, and everybody can come down, and they want to be able to have a safe environment. But saying that and doing it is two different things. The senators really, right now, they don't want to see anybody. I mean, if they don't have to, they don't want to see anybody face to face all that much. I think there's a real concern about their staffs, about themselves, the same thing with the House, with the members and their staffs. So they're trying to work out what they're going to do. I anticipate there's going to be fewer hearings, fewer rooms available from some, somewhere I heard that, read that. They're just not sure how they're going to conduct it yet. They have some ideas, obviously, but they, you're not going to see the kind of crowds getting into the Capitol that used to be. I would be surprised if they had delegation days and all that sort of thing. Right now, the legislature itself is, and you've all read it in the papers, y'all are aware of it from your own budgets, it's all about budget balancing and how they're going to do that. In Texas, you have to have the balanced budget, and really, the numbers may be rather astronomical. They may be very difficult to reach, a balanced budget. It may take the session, and it may take longer to get a balanced budget. Who knows? But as part of that, Brandy's going to talk a little more about the budget. And part of that budget is school financing again, what they're going to do with public schools. You know, they made a lot of promises last session, no one expected this, how they're going to, how that's going to play in with the budget, transportation issues, et cetera. Brandy can talk about that. But they are going to deal with this COVID-19, and they've already, there's already been bills trying to rein in the governor's emergency powers. That may or may not happen, but there's always a chance that they're going to try to, and I think the anxiety for cities is they're going to try to limit our, our local control powers even more so in some way. I mean, just, and somehow, they're going to try to do that. We're going to have a new speaker. Speaker's a pretty good guy. Probably, I wouldn't think he's as anti-city as the previous speaker seemed to be, and, but then again, I'm not sure he's going to be able to or want to, you know, be helpful. He may just allow things to occur as they occur. So, I mean, I think the cities are concerned about revenues, about limiting local control further, about what could happen with a variety of different subjects, that the overwhelming sense is that it may not be as bad as it was last session, but there are issues that are going to be out there that involve trying to limit further, something to do with local control for cities and counties. We're not the only one, counties too, school districts, as well as trying to fund school districts, but also limit them in some way. They've got healthcare with Medicaid expansion, it's probably going to go, try to be attempted to be discussed. But the numbers are the same. The Democrats didn't change anything in the House. One, one, lost one, you know, type of thing. The Senate has one, I think, one more Democrat, one fewer Republican. Dan Patrick, the Lieutenant Governor, controls the agenda over there pretty well. So we'll see what happens in the House, but there'll probably be a discussion about it. I'm not sure, it may even get to the floor for a vote, but I'm not sure there are enough people who want to do that sort of thing that would help hospitals or healthcare and that sort of thing. Redistricting, it's a redistricting session. Having served on, as redistricting chair, I can tell you that it's overwhelming, overwhelmingly on the minds of all the members throughout the entire session. And they may not even be able to get to it until a special session during the summer. Who knows yet? But there are still five Republicans on the Legislative Redistricting Board, and if things can't be done, redistricting goes to them. But it's always on the minds of all the members. A lot of their time will be taken, and their staffs will be taken trying to propose ideas for their own districts. So that's going to be out there. I think overall in the session, for cities, it's going to still be on a defensive posture, trying to anticipate, track bills, try to see what issues are out there that are affecting local control, or things that we just do as cities, just trying to govern and for the citizens of our communities, all around the state. I think there's a sense of hostility towards the larger cities by some members of the Texas House and Senate and leadership. There's, I don't think there's as much hostility as suburbs, but I don't know that they can just pass bills trying to affect large cities. It's probably going to affect everybody in one form or another for the most part. Let's see if there's anything else that I wanted to mention up front, and turn it over to Brandy, because the budget's, the budget's overall going to be the biggest problem we have as, in the legislature. I did say, I don't think the atmosphere will be as hostile, but it's going to be there. It's still going to be, it's just not abated, and everybody can go back and do a business as we can, and we'll revise all the statutes that hurt us and all that sort of thing. There's, that's probably not going to happen. The best thing we can do, I think, is just all the cities try to work together as much as we can, and all the people involved to be able to try to educate legislators that they don't want to do some of the things that may be proposed. On the other hand, I think the bills, I'm not optimistic that the bills will have a whole lot fewer filings. I think we're going to have still a whole lot of filings, because legislators tend to think they have the greatest ideas out there, they have tons of ideas, what they want to do, and it's fairly simple to get bills drafted to some degree, although I think they're running behind as usual in doing that. I guess, Brandy, do you want to go ahead and talk about the budget some and other things that you see and concern you?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Bert. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I know I'm the newest member of the team, but I'm really excited to be part of the team, working with Bert and with James and with all of you. I think this is going to be a really interesting session, as Bert has said, for a number of reasons. Obviously, the budget is going to be the biggest focus, and, you know, nobody's quite sure where that budget deficit really is going to fall for the next biennium. They're projecting about a $4 billion deficit just to fill the hole from this current biennium when they enter the session, and then, of course, looking into the next biennium. So, I mean, the numbers right now don't look too bad. I mean, honestly, we're only two years into this fiscal year, but the state's revenues are only down about 8%, which, if that plays out the way we would expect it to, then that looks like about a $4 billion deficit. Some had projected $20 billion, so somewhere in that range, but I certainly think it's going to be closer to the $4 billion range than the 20. But that doesn't include, as Bert said, the school finance hole that they've got to fill from last session. So there will just be a lot of challenges. That's where the members are really focused, that's where their attention is focused, is on how to fill that gap. And so we would anticipate, like Bert said, probably not a lot less bills filed, but certainly less bills moving, less substantial bills moving as they really focus in on the budget issues. And then just a couple of other things that I wanted to add. So transportation, obviously, that ties into the budget discussion as well. The only big issues that we would anticipate on transportation issues is really the Prop 1 and Prop 7 funding, and that funding being clawed back, it's part of the budget process. It equates to about $7 billion in the biennium that's currently being dedicated to transportation. That could be clawed back with a 2/3 vote in both houses, in the House and Senate. So that's something that we're going to be watching very diligently, and something that we certainly would not like to see. Those funds were dedicated to transportation for a reason, and the voters approved both of those constitutional amendments by over 85%. So it'll be something that we'll be watching closely. And then annexation issues, obviously, is at the top of your agenda, and Bert and I will be focused on those as well, just protecting that ability to annex Castle Hills and watching those pieces of legislation. I'm sure they'll be filed again as they were last time, but we'll obviously be following that issue very diligently as well. And then one other thing I just wanted to mention, as Bert said, is we do have a presumptive speaker at this point, Dade Phelan. He is a good guy, and we do, I mean, he's certainly moving quickly to fill his team. He's asked Tommy Williams, former senator, and actually, Dade's former boss, to be, to lead his transition team and putting together his staff team, and he's already hired his chief of staff, and he's already formed a working group of legislators that's chaired by Representative Olerson and Representative Thompson to determine what things are really going to look like next session. So to Bert's point earlier about what does the House and Senate really look like, what is the access into the Capitol for the public, this working group is going to be focused on those issues. And we've heard from a few members that they have concerns if the Capitol really isn't open to the public, whether they have constitutional challenges at the end of this session from legislation that gets passed. So there's really a lot of things that they have to balance, but I fully agree with Bert that when you talk to the members privately, they're not interested in anybody entering the Capitol. I think they're concerned for their own health and safety and their family members as well. So it's going to be really interesting to see how they balance that.
Thank you, Bert and Brandy. I'm going to turn it over to James now, and he's going to walk you through some legislative considerations.
Mayor and Council, let's see, I'm screen sharing. I hope I really am.
Yeah, you're good, James.
Okay, good. Excellent. All right, so thank you, Bert and Brandy, for the introduction there. It's a very good, I could listen to them, you know, all night long, but I'm kind of a policy geek anyway. But I want to hit a few high points for Council, and then at the end, give some direction as we finalize our legislative agenda for the 21th session. Our legislative team, you've heard from Bert, you've heard from Brandy, obviously, City Council's a very important part of our team. Management Department directors are helping me on a regular basis look at legislation and figure out how it would impact the city, good or bad, what we might need to do. Legislative liaison, that's me, I'm just moving all the pieces around, making everybody else has the resources they need. But we're not alone on this, and we'll talk more, we've been talking a lot to our neighboring cities, looking at their legislative agendas, talking about issues that we have in common. One of those is the sales tax issue we'll talk about shortly. So I think you see cities are becoming a lot more active and are a lot more collaborative than in past sessions, because the past couple of sessions have been very, very rough on city local authority. So here's the process we follow. We follow this for the past, I guess, four sessions now, five sessions. We first do what we're doing now. We draft and adopt the legislative agenda. This is a very detailed list of issues and positions for the city. And we make it detailed on purpose, because as you'll see on the last bullet there, if a topic comes up during the session and it's not already addressed in our agenda, we do not have the authority to write letters or do testimony or make phone calls or ask Bert or Brandy to make phone calls on our behalf, because Council has not given that authority. It's got to be in the agenda. So we put a lot of detail in there, and knowing that most, many of those might not come up, but you never know what the big issue's going to be. For example, there've already been five or six bills filed in the first week about fireworks sales. Who saw that coming? The fireworks sales is a big issue down in Austin all of a sudden, and they're trying to add all kinds of additional holidays when fireworks can be sold. That's not in our agenda. Last session, we had the issue come up with breweries and expanding the ability of breweries to direct sell to customers. Wasn't in our agenda, but we went to Council and got a resolution. So when we come to you with a list, it's a very long list, I realize that, and we added some things to it this year. So we do that in order to be prepared during the session for some of those unexpected topics that always pop up every year. Once the session happens, you know, this is the second bullet we're not doing this year. We will work with our local representatives to file local bills where they're needed. We'll talk more about some of those later on when we review the past couple of sessions, but this time around, we're not seeing any issue that the city of Louisville really needs to pursue legislation on. So we're being a little bit more looking to see what they're going to do on their own. When the session's going on, and even before the session during the interim, we support the legislative agenda by sending letters or emails that either support or oppose bills or issues based on the agenda that you will adopt next month. And we send letters to our, to our own state reps and our own state senators, we send it to our federal officials, we send it to other legislators who are chairs of various committees or members of various committees when they have a bill coming before them. We are very aggressive on that. I will add that all of the letters that we put out there also are on our website, so the public can see the positions that we are trying to take on their behalf. We also will go and testify in committees, and as Bert mentioned, that could be very different this year. But in the past, when we saw a hearing coming up on a bill that was very important to us, we would draft our three minutes or two minutes of testimony, practice it, we select our team, we drive down there the day before, stay overnight, get up first thing in the morning, go to the hearing, hope that we get called very early, so we could go home after lunch. Sometimes that didn't work out that way. But we made that trip multiple times during the session to make sure that our voice was being heard, because if we don't make that trip, I guarantee you our voice is not going to get the attention that I believe it deserves. We don't know how that's going to work this session, but we are going to participate in whatever process they adopt. We're still going to keep our voice out there. Quick calendar, prefiling began November 9th. There were more than 600 bills filed on the first day, and this is in a time when both Bert and Brandy, I'm sure, have heard the same thing I did, that the House Calendars Committee was telling members, hey, pull back on the number of bills, cut down your number, the only pilot is really important. And as Bert mentioned, I think most members believe any idea they have is really important. So we haven't seen a huge slowdown. I'd say it's a incremental slowdown, not a dramatic one. Session will open January 12th. The last day for bill filing is March the 12th, so we keep watching those new filings every single day up through March 12th. Some of the most damaging bills for cities in general, and Louisville in particular, have actually come up in those last few days of filing. Generally, the big bills are filed now. They're being filed in November, some in the first couple of weeks of the session, but we watch all the way to the end, because things get snuck in sometimes that we want to make sure we don't miss them. some in the first couple of weeks of the session, but we watch all the way to the end, because things get snuck in sometimes that we want to make sure we don't miss them. Session closes May 31. Very good chance there will be a special session this time around. From what I'm hearing, it'll be difficult during the regular session to accomplish the things that have to be done, and certainly not all things that they want to do. The deadline for the governor to sign or veto a bill that is passed by both chambers is June 20. Generally, special sessions would follow that timeline, would be after June 20. And that is called by the governor at his choosing. So here's things that we know as we go into the 2021 session. We know that there's still Republican majorities in both chambers. The House had no change. The blue wave that was talked about did not happen in the state of Texas on the House and Senate down in Austin. The Senate switched one seat from Republican to Democrat. There was a traditionally Democratic district down in the south part of the state that during a special election flipped over to Republican during the regular election, bounced back to Democrat. So 1813. Now, that's an important number, because right now, the Senate rules, as amended a couple of sessions ago, require 19 votes to bring a bill to the floor. Our Lieutenant Governor already has said he would be willing to change that rule to 18 votes, since he has an 1813 majority. We'll see if that happens, but it is 1813. It is a clear majority. The House will have a new Speaker and new committee chairs. There might be some repeat chairs, but there'll be a lot of new ones. The Senate's going to have probably largely the same leadership. There was very little change in the Senate membership. And the high leaders pretty much stayed in office. So again, top priority, budget, clearly. The biennium budget's going to take a lot of their time. I've heard a couple of people out of some of our local offices saying that they think that everything else is going to take a backseat, that they'll pass a few little things here and there, but nothing of substance until they make some progress on the budget. We'll see if they get budget weary and start looking around for other topics. Redistricting is the second big priority. It has to be done. You can't skip it. They have to redistrict. It will, as always, be a very difficult and challenging process. Texas is a big and growing state with a lot at stake. We'll have census numbers around April 1, supposed to have them April 1 by federal statute, and that's when the sleeves get rolled up and the pencils get sharpened. Very good chance this will become a special session topic. We don't know yet, but it would not surprise me at all if we had a special session focused on redistricting. Here's what we don't know. We don't know who the House Speaker is going to be. It's most likely going to be Representative Phelan out of Beaumont. He already had a press conference announcing he had more than enough votes from Republicans and Democrats to win that seat. And a couple of the top contenders that were challenging for that stepped back and endorsed him. So it's very likely he will be the Speaker. It's not a guarantee till they vote. So I'm just saying, we don't yet know for sure who it's going to be. We don't know if the Capitol will be open to the public. It's not open right now. And when it does open, to what degree will it be open? Will it be open only for members and staff? Will there be public allowed in? Will they have hearings in person? Will hearings be online? Or some kind of hybrid of the two? We just don't know yet, and frankly, I don't think people down in Austin know for sure yet. We don't know how much the hostile atmosphere we've seen in the past couple of sessions has abated. My hope is it's abated some. You remember, it got pretty fierce the past couple of sessions. I hope it's abated some. I don't think it's gone away, but with budget and redistricting being such big topics, maybe they'll be too busy dealing with those have-to issues, and we'll be able to get a little bit less attention on cities. And we don't know how many bills are going to be filed that impact Louisville. There were about 2,000 bills filed last session that directly affected cities, and a lot of those would have affected Louisville had they passed. So we don't know how many bills we have to track. We fully expect to track a couple hundred bills throughout the session, and it could be far more than that. We just have to see what's filed. So we have some allies out there. I told you, we're not alone in this. In addition to our team, in addition to our neighboring cities, Texas Municipal League is still a very effective lobbying organization. Not like they were maybe 10, 15 years ago, but they're still very effective. They're in Austin. They're very present. They know the system. And we rely on them a lot to track some of the bills that are outside of our immediate area of interest. North Texas Commission, the past couple of sessions have become much more active. They have been pretty quiet for a while, and they've gotten much more active the past couple of sessions. They already put out their legislative agenda where they some of it overlaps with ours. They have some issues that are exactly this. In fact, some of the language in our legislative agenda is exactly their language on several topics, especially the social equity topics. What's great about North Texas Commission is they coordinate chambers and businesses along with governments. So it's not just local government people talking. It's it's business executives, chambers of commerce, industry, school districts, so it's a pretty broad perspective. And then the Texas Police Chiefs Association, we're going to be working with them quite a bit this session. They've taken a very active stance in the area of police reform. Police reform will be a big topic in every legislature in the country this session, this coming year. There's already been multiple bills filed in Austin, in both the House and the Senate, on police reform. Texas Police Chiefs Association has put out a very good document describing all the suggestions they have, and we've adopted a number of those into our agenda as well. Some of the bills that have been filed very much follow the Police Chiefs Association recommendations. Some of the bills that have been filed go way beyond what the police chiefs have said they're comfortable with. We work with them a lot on police reform issues, because that is going to be a frequent topic of conversation. And our most important allies, frankly, is our residents and businesses. And cities have not historically done a good job of working with this most important ally. Obviously, our government is nonpartisan, and we want to try and stay nonpartisan, and there's a lot of partisan divide out there right now, but there are certain issues that clearly can unite the public. Potholes are neither Republican or Democrat. You've heard that before. They don't have a party. There's a hole in the road. You got to fix it. So a lot of the issues we take down there are trying to follow the will of the voters, the voters that that helped us create the Louisville 2025 Plan, that supported the bond election, that put you in office and gave you the greatest public trust that exists. They gave you their vote to speak on their behalf. So we try to keep residents informed of what we're doing. The legislative agenda is published publicly. All of our letters and testimony is on the website, and we will do updates periodically as needed. So we need to rely on the fact that we are trying to represent the residents, and we won't get 100% support, obviously. No one ever does. And I think as long as we're acting in good faith and we can show that we're trying to do what's best for the city as a whole, we've got some allies out there. Just want to show you a few of the bills that have been filed. Remember, the legislature is really designed to kill bills, not to pass bills. So most of the bills that are filed will never ever get to the governor's desk. Most of them never get out of committee. But these are just to give you a feel for some bills that are out there. HB 35 would require that bond elections be held in November and require approval by at least 25% of all registered voters. Not 25% of the people who vote, 25% of your total registered voter roll. So in Louisville, that would be 12,500 people voting in favor of a bond election. I don't think we've ever had that many people vote in the city election. So we would view this as an obstacle to getting a bond election passed. HB 88 would make an, there's a lot of reforms in this. This is the George Floyd Act. And there's a lot of police reforms in there, including a ban on chokeholds, requiring intervention, qualified immunity changes. Some of these follow the police chief's model. Some of them do not. It's a very large, complicated bill. 173 would create an emergency powers board. There's been a lot of criticism from legislators that the governor, during this emergency, has done what the governor thought he needed to do and not gone back to the legislature. And so there's several bills that have already been filed that would basically require the governor to share authority with the legislature if there's another emergency declared at some point in the future. HB 96 would eliminate increases in taxable appraised value. The year that you apply for your homestead, the market value that year would be your market value for appraisal purposes until someone else bought the house. We don't like that idea. Because it doesn't follow the market value principle in the Texas Constitution. Number 233 would exempt cities under 25,000 from the HB 2439 Building Materials Law that was approved last session. We want to see HB 2439 repealed, frankly, because it took away a lot of local authority on building materials. This would exempt small cities. We are not under 25,000. It wouldn't help us at all. I think it shows a crack there that I think there's at least some recognition that 2439 is not the great bill that some people thought it was going to be. 312 would require implicit bias training for all police officers. 327 would require some state agencies to broadcast public meetings over the internet. You might wonder why we care about a bill that applies to state agencies and not cities. Well, they tried out the state agencies, and if it works, they bring it to us. So we would be next in line. So we watch this to see if there's support for that. On the Senate side, always fewer bills in the Senate, because there's fewer senators. 61 would create an unfunded mandate work group. And this group would study all of the mandates that are out there in the past and all current bills for unfunded mandates and put out a list of those mandates. Doesn't eliminate them, doesn't criticize them, just puts out a list. We like that idea, because we've had state reps tell us before, they don't think there are unfunded mandates. Give us a list. Well, here'd be an official list. We'd like to be able to point to that. SB 68 would create a duty to intervene for peace officers. It's one of, Senator Miles has put out about eight or nine that the big George Floyd Act in the House, he's duplicated it, but with eight or nine individual bills, one for each reform. This one actually reflects our Louisville Police Department general orders. And so we're good with this one. Senate Bill 81 would create a criminal offense for filing a false report or alarm because of bias or prejudice. We've seen on the internet, somebody gets on their cell phone and calls and says, this person is a problem, this black man, this gay woman, this whatever. It's a them versus us, and they're calling not because there's a crime or a threat, because it's them. And we get very upset when we see that, as we should. This would make it a criminal offense. That's already the case in a lot of cities and states around the country. It's not the case in Texas unless Senate Bill 81 or similar legislation passes. So that gives you a feel for what's out there. Here's the objectives that we know we're going to look at. At this point, again, we have no plan to file any local legislation. We're really, really focused on making sure that we can continue to annex Castle Hills under the existing SPA. It would be tragic if the law changed in 2021, right as we're getting ready to potentially annex in December of 2021. That'd be like running a marathon, and as you see the finish line, someone cuts the ribbon. We want to preserve this ability so that we can complete this annexation we've been working toward for more than 20 years. We'd like to seek relief from destination-sourced sales tax for economic development agreements. So you might remember earlier this year, the Texas Comptroller made a change on online sales taxes. This is from the Wayfair Supreme Court ruling that states could collect these online sales taxes. And so the Comptroller came up with a plan that most of his plan works really well. How they divvied up among cities, you know, it's not maybe perfect, but it's pretty darn good compared to what it could have been, especially. But he also, at the same time he was doing what he had to do, he also made a change he didn't have to make. Instead, for online sales, currently, the point of sale has been where the store is located, where the order is received. He wants to change that, is changing that, to destination-sourced. So if I order it and I live in Louisville, Louisville gets the sales tax for that. If I order it from a Louisville store, but I live in Carrollton, Carrollton gets the sales tax for that. We would like to see that whole rule eliminated. We don't think it's a good change. It creates a lot of issues, and we actually testified before the Comptroller about that, along with a lot of other cities. I don't know if that rule's going to be changed. I think the legislature is probably going to take, you know, trust the Comptroller to know his job, and I don't know if it's going to change. At the very least, we do have a couple of economic development agreements that were created and adopted under laws that existed at the time that involved sales tax. Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, obviously, is the big one. We want to try and say, okay, if you're going to change the rule, change the rule, but we followed the rules back then and did everything you told us you wanted us to do, exactly the way you want us to do it. Don't pull the rug out from under us. Protect those agreements. Make the rule going forward, not going backward. So that's going to be, we think, a focus. The city wants to support appropriate measures related to police reform and social equity. We've talked with the Mayor's Commission about a long list of things that they'd like to see on the local level, and we're doing those things. But there also is some discussion about statewide changes. And again, that's where the Police Chiefs Association comes in and becomes a real partner for us. In everything we do, we want to try and preserve local rulemaking authority. We firmly believe that local government is the closest to the people being governed. There's a good chance that a Louisville resident going to a grocery store might run into one of you at the grocery store and be able to say, hey, council member, hey, mayor, I want to talk to you for a minute. You're probably not going to run into the governor, lieutenant governor, or agency head. You might run into your state rep, but there's only one state rep for a larger area or two senators for a larger area, so the odds are slim. And of course, so we believe that local government is the most connected to those needs. We want to try and preserve local rulemaking authority. Instead of a one-size-fits-all, where every city in the state, no matter what, has the exact same set of rules. That just doesn't serve the people in those communities. And then the last bullet on there, you know, when the Senate, or part of the legislature passed SB 2 last session, that, among other things, did what we call a revenue cap. The author disagrees with that term, but we consider it a revenue cap. It also changed the budget timelines. And the budget timelines now for doing a potential tax increase based on Senate Bill, based on the revenue cap, is just not a realistic timeline. You essentially have to know before you do a budget and before you know your property values, you have to decide you want to raise taxes. And that's not the order we do things. That literally is putting the cart before the horse. You want to have your values and then set a budget and then see what taxes are needed to support it, not decide your tax rate and then see your values and then write up a budget. So we think that the timeline they put together, they didn't spend enough effort trying to make it work. I know that the Mayor Capel is really pushing hard on this one, and we support that effort of trying to clean it up, make it reasonable so that we can do the job we're here to do. So those are the known objectives. Want to talk about critical issues. We're getting close to the point where I need some council input. This is just a review. In 2017, these were our 10 critical issues. And we had one local bill at that time that was adding Louisville to the list of cities eligible for a sales tax, state sales tax rebate for qualifying hotel projects. We succeeded in that. The project we were pursuing didn't come about. We'd sure like to extend this, because we have some other projects that might be really, really good and would qualify. It seems right now the atmosphere in Austin is not going to let that be extended. It might just go away altogether. But these were our 10 critical issues in 2017. And for you, just so you know, we follow everything in the agenda, but the critical issues are the ones we spend the most time on. Because if there's 2,000 bills filed affecting cities, I can't write letters for 2,000 bills. But I can write letters for the 10 or 12 that affect these issues. So we start here, and then we go to the rest. And you'll see in 2019, it was down to six, and those six were on the list of 10 the year before. So that's annexation under the SPA, local revenue caps, control of rights of way, phase 2 funding for 35E, revenue redirection, where that's where the state has the city collect revenue and then takes the revenue for state purposes. Having a lot in municipal court and other areas also. And then online sales tax. Some of these have been resolved. Online sales tax, our concern last time was making sure there was an equitable way to disperse the online sales tax collections to cities. That's been done. Phase 2 funding for 35E, it's not fully done, but phase was 1A, 1B, the overpasses, that's moving along. So we had some progress there, not through the legislature per se, but with the state. Rights of way, we didn't do well. We lost some authority there. Revenue caps, we didn't win that one either. Annexation under the SPA, the good thing is there were several annexation bills that went through the system, but we watched carefully for making sure whether they would affect the SPA or not. And we were able to, working with Bert, working with our local representatives, make sure that didn't happen. So that was a success for us there. We had two local bills. One was to allow a crime control district election in Castle Hills. It did not make it to the floor. And the other, which Brandy worked on extensively, was to revise the governance structure of DCTA, and that was in conjunction with Highland Village, Denton, DCTA, and Denton County, and that did pass and was implemented. Which brings us to 2021. So I reached out to council, and the response sheets from council are available through the city secretary's office. Anybody wants to see how individual council members mark their sheet, city secretary has those available. There were six topics off that long list of topics that multiple council members said they'd like to see be a critical issue. Annexation under the SPA, revenue flexibility, and that is defined as preserving the revenue streams we currently have and giving us the ability to pursue reasonable revenue streams if they're available. Repeal of HB 2439, that's the building materials law. Payday lending. This is not for the city to regulate payday lending or title lending. This is for the state to step up and regulate them, something we've been asking them to do for several sessions. There's already been several bills filed that would do this. Our agenda actually says to subject those lenders to state banking regulations regarding loans. The budget and tax roll schedule that I mentioned was listed by multiple members. And the destination-sourced sales tax, in particular, protecting the agreements that exist. So those six got multiple mentions from council members. There were six more that were mentioned just by one council member each. Revenue redirection from local to state, right-of-way authority. We think they did enough, well, okay, maybe I'm being mean to say it. We think enough damage was done last session that it might not come up again, but you just never know. Commercial value comparisons. Mayor Durham is very familiar with this one. This is where a commercial property under state law can find their own comparison properties for finding the value, the tax value of their property. And those comparisons don't have to actually be comparable in the way you would think of it. They don't have to be local. They don't have to be identical. They just have to have enough similarity that they're accepted under the statute. What's happening is some large, large commercial properties are, have a taxable appraised value that is far below their actual market value. Companies that have sold for, say, $120 million and are on the tax rolls for half that. That's not fair to all the other taxpayers who are paying their fair share, so we'd like to see that loophole closed. So we'd like to see that loophole closed in some way. And that was mentioned by one council member. Police hiring, this is is two parts. One is making it easier to to discipline officers and remove officers that don't meet your standards. And the other is making it easier for other departments to know that an applicant has had that happen. Right now, currently, that's not always the case. Lobbying, there was a big attack last year, a big effort last year to prohibit cities from lobbying, from having paid lobbyists, from paying dues to an organization that paid lobbies, had paid lobbyists on staff. It was defeated, but it was close. It's already been filed again. So that one got in there. And then broadband infrastructure, and this one's on the list because as you recall with the pandemic, a lot of people had to work from home, a lot of kids had to do school from home and a lot of households don't have that broadband. There are bills already filed that would extend broadband in rural areas. We're not a rural area, we're a suburb. But we're a suburb that has low to moderate income neighborhoods that don't have a broadband infrastructure. And then it really cripples them when they have to work from home or have to learn from home. So six on your left hand side that were mentioned by multiple members, six on the right hand side that were mentioned by one member. We want to just add a couple more notes for you. This is just staff throwing some other items in there that we think are worth considering, whether they are critical issues to you or not. At least they're worth being in the discussion. One is keeping the May general election date. There have been bills filed every session I can remember to eliminate local election dates and get local elections down to fewer dates or ultimately to November. The argument for it is it increases voter turnout. Our argument against it is we're nonpartisan, we like being nonpartisan. We don't have the partisan road logjam that exists in other areas. So please don't put us on November because that will partisanize our elections. And getting more people to vote for an election that they don't know anything about isn't necessarily your objective. Make revisions of HB 3167, that's the plan approval shot clock. We have found a system that works and but it's not the cleanest it could be. It's not the perfect system. We'd like to see some revisions made to that shot clock approval process. Social equity legislation, there's going to be a lot of it filed. And this is just making sure people have fair opportunity and are treated in a fair and respectful manner. And then no mandated meet or confer collective bargaining or civil service municipal employees. It's been our legislative agenda all along that we we don't want those things forced on us because what we do here works for Louisville. With police reform, you're seeing a lot of talk about citizen review boards and you're starting to see more talk about civil service. So we have a little bit of a concern that there might be a push to bring more cities into these required processes that just don't fit for Louisville. So that's a lot of information. What we need to do is try and narrow it down to the list of critical issues that you as council reach a consensus. Those are our most important issues. We're keeping all of them, the whole list goes with us. But what are the ones that you want us to really focus on out of all of these? And with that, I've talked enough, I'm just going to listen and take notes and answer questions if there are any.
So Mayor Council, we would just need some direction from you, you know, if if you think the list that you see in front of you that was recommended by multiple members and then recommended by a single member, if you want that combined and that would be our focus, I think that's doable. But we just need to make sure that you feel this is a complete list. Or if there's anything in particular you would want to take off.
Who's going to pay for the broadband infrastructure?
Ideally, that'd be through state grant programs. If it were the cities forced to pay for it, that'd be an unfunded mandate and we would oppose it on the ground. So it'd be an unfunded mandate.
But has the state said anything about paying for it?
One of the bills that's been filed would create a grant program for rural broadband infrastructure. So there's at least interest in having a conversation. But remember, the budget year is going to be really tough. I mean, Brandy mentioned a between $4 billion and $20 billion deficit. So something like that, we know broadband is not cheap. That's going to be a hard one to get during a very tight budget year. But the pandemic showed the real need for it. So there's there's always a conflict. You really, really need it, can you afford it?
And I do think the focus, when you talk about broadband infrastructure, is going to be for, as James just said, the rural areas, not for the metropolitan areas.
Yeah, the the assumption always or often is that the the cable companies, the phone companies, they've taken care of all that. But they actually haven't, especially when state law changed. In 2015, Senate Bill 5 passed the Texas Cable Act. And part of that allowed what what is in the industry called redlining. It's not redlining like the old, you know, racial practice of mortgages. It's redlining by neighborhood saying this neighborhood, we think we can make good money. This neighborhood, we don't think we can. So we're only going to install a system here and only offer service here. Local franchises did not allow that, state franchises do. And so there now are some neighborhoods, even in Louisville, some neighborhoods that have new high speed infrastructure and two or three services available. And there are some neighborhoods that have early generation digital or even some analog connections still. And they just can't keep up with our current internet demands.
I I actually find the broadband infrastructure idea interesting. I know I talked to Donna and them a while back. It seems to be a lot of state law that prevents us from having any flexibility. And that I don't know how far we'll get with it, but I think it's one of those things, you know, you can kind of push out there and see, see if we can get any bites and and move it forward. I mean, it may not be the highest priority that when you go and talk to the legislature. But I think it should definitely be something that you put out there to see what, you know, what they feel. Because it may be a couple of sessions before we can get anywhere and, you know, and if this, well, what's happened with this pandemic doesn't prove the need for it and not just our rural areas, which I believe they do need it. And here, maybe maybe we can start getting that ball rolling. I don't think it'll be this session, it'll go, but you know, you got to start somewhere.
Well, can I can I interrupt?
Absolutely, Bernard.
Couple of things, one is on the broadband, you're fighting the telecom companies too. I mean, they're not going to want to do anything. Number one, James is absolutely correct. You got a budget issue of even any monies being expended. But you've also got the fact that unless there's incentives for the telecom companies and cable companies to provide that kind of service, they're not going to want to do anything they don't want to do. So, you know, it's a it's a it's a long road. The the idea that defining rural is not just rural, but also suburban areas or other areas that don't have adequate broadband infrastructure. So if if there is some incentive that the the telecom companies have, cable companies have to want to do that, they'll they'll get on board. Without them, it's really, really, I think, difficult to do that. The other thing is on destination source sales tax, the large cities, you're going to you're going to find the suburban cities, the the idea of grandfathering in what you have existing or trying to allow for some ability of suburban cities and rural cities combined to be able to not have to deal with what the comptroller wants to do is is try to understand that the the large cities, there's so many people in large cities, they benefit by that. When people order online for destination, you know, on the tax, they're going to benefit. They got they got millions of people. We've got millions of people in the rest of the state, but they have millions of people in the largest cities in the state of Texas. They actually benefit from that. So the idea is trying to separate that where we're not fighting them too over it. That they understand that they are going to get what they get, but the rural cities and the ones that already have idea of grandfathering like like James said, is probably pretty important on how to approach that. So that would be just what I probably would add on on that, at least at this point. The commercial value comps, that's a great issue. That's a it's a great subject. The problem is you've got all these developers and all these other folks with these large companies and we're, you know, you're you're dealing with the Texas Association of Business and all the other issue, all the other groups that benefit from that. So that's a hard road for cities to try to deal with. But I think it's it's one worthwhile to kind of keep bringing it up in one way or the other, try to get some modification of that so that there's the ability to do that. And maybe the, you know, all the tax appraisers and appraisal districts and, you know, when they when they when they're working on this as well, they can be a useful ally in that.
And what Bert mentioned about the destination source sales tax is exactly why I I do not think that the comptroller's rule is going to be reversed. There will be a couple legislators who try. I don't remember his name, but the rep out of Round Rock was very vocal, both in a committee hearing and later at the comptroller's hearing, opposing the change because they've got Dell. But if Dell were somehow, you know, grandfathered in, then he becomes less vocal and the comptroller, last I looked, had found a way to kind of grandfather them in by the start date. But the start date predates everybody else. So we 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 might have a chance of getting, you know, as a if your agreement already was in place as of January 1 of 2020, you're good to go. But if you adopted it after the rules change was proposed, then well, too bad. We might have a shot at that. And that's that's a that's a seven figure hit to our budget if we don't.
Have to see where that comes up or we can, Brandy and I may be able to talk to the comptroller's office about helping on that issue. Because if the comptroller is okay with, there's always a comptroller bill. Brandy knows this, we know it, James knows it. Every session, there's a a comptroller bill of some sort. And that's that's the place maybe to try to fix that as as we see it develop.
Absolutely. And James and Bert, I was just going to add one more thing if I can. The item for council on repealing HB 2439, I just thought I would mention that bill was authored by Representative Phelan, who may very well be the speaker. So I know it's not a popular topic, but repealing is probably off the table. So I would say some sort of softening or if there's a way to modify it that would benefit the city, that that would be my advice on the direction we should go there.
Yeah, I think TML wants to do that. They want to modify it. They want to, they know that repealing it is probably out of the question. But I think they want to see if there's a way to soften it considerably.
I forgot Phelan offered that, good catch. If council wanted to keep that topic on there, we'd easily change it to modify instead of repeal.
Yeah, I would probably say repeal or modify.
So council, you have this list. We will be bringing your legislative agenda back to you later. So if you wanted to give this some more thought, we can certainly discuss it when we bring the item back to you. For adoption. So Mayor, I I think that it might be good to council just to spend some more time on these items and we could go to the next item on our workshop.
Regarding renovation of Hedrick House?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mayor, council members, park fans, Stacy and I, Director of Parks and Recreation Department here with our friends from BRS, going to talk to you a little bit about some of the plans that we've envisioned for improving Hedrick House. If you'll remember, the improvement and updates of the Hedrick House was in our 2018 master plan for the Parks and Recreation Department as a medium to high action step. So we're happy to be moving forward to that tonight. Like I said, Craig Baugh from BRS is here. He and his team, Mick Massey and Bill Clifford had helped lead not only members of the Parks and Recreation Department, but engineering and public services through some envisioning exercises about what needs to be not only fixed out at Hedrick House, but what it would take to get it back to its prior glory of being O'Neill Ford home. So I'm going to hand the reins over to Craig and let him walk you through the process that we've been through so far.
Terrific, thank you, Stacy. I'm hopeful you can see the PowerPoint. Yes?
Yes.
Oh, thank you very much. Briefly, just wanted to walk you through our process and share with you the master planning results of the Hedrick House. We want to share kind of the process as well as some of our recommendations moving forward. As Stacy alluded to, the 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 big thing that we discovered and had a great time understanding in more depth is that this this property, this house was designed by O'Neill Ford in 1962. If you if you are unaware, he was an American architect, but he specialized in a mid-century modern style. The style was unique in that it was influenced by the Southwest. And he added some very unique and special touches to his interpretation of the Midwesterns, I mean, of the mid-century modern style, which were, you know, highlighted in the property here. And so we're going to share a little bit of what we learned about O'Neill Ford and some of the significance of his contribution. One thing to note about him, though, was that in 1974, he was actually designated as a national historic landmark. When I say that, I mean, O'Neill Ford, the person, is is a landmark, which is so unusual and it's the only time that's ever it's ever happened. And so again, that's a distinction that's very unique for this particular project. Up in the upper left here, in the middle there, that's a picture of O'Neill Ford. He was very beloved as a teacher and a mentor. He did a lot of work with Trinity University. Some of his his art, the pieces that he influenced, you can see in these other images. And really, this collage is meant to show you that while you might recognize some of the mid-century modern features in architecture, if you're familiar with that style, the unique thing that O'Neill Ford added were these handmade touches. And they showed up in the craft of the building, whether they were in the doors or light fixtures or in various decorative elements. And if you look at some of his other work, you can see these repeated, these these very special elements that were part of his style. In 1963, the Hedrick House was actually featured in Architectural Digest. It was recognized as something very special and a whole portfolio was issued. And this is very important to us because it reveals some of the original character of the building. And this was a great find to have these. I want you to notice kind of in the picture in the upper middle, that is the entry doors. And you can start to see some of that craft built into the doors themselves there. We're going to point out some other special features too that we've got details on. But it's important to note that that was there, it was renovated. It was a part of that 1963 feature. 1987, when the building was acquired by the City of Louisville. And then throughout the years up until 2009, the project went through a series of minor renovations, really just to to keep it up to speed, you know, to sort of keep it usable. These were all minor renovations, but unfortunately, from about 2009 until today, all of the maintenance, for the most part, was kept at a very minimal level. And so part of our challenge was to figure out what do we need to do to bring the building back up to usable standards and current building standards? Let's take a quick tour around the building so you can become familiar with it. On the left, you can kind of see some of the pictures that we gleaned from that Architectural Digest magazine article and then some current photos. You can see right away at the entryway from 1962, the carved doors. The present doors don't reflect any of that curve, that carved special quality any longer. Inside, there have been many renovations that have made the facility more useful and kept it up to date, but took away a lot of the original character and quality that O'Neill Ford originally put into it. Some more spaces, the living room, you can see that there was some decorative elements that have had to be modified to deal with acoustics as well as code issues. Lighting was changed to make it a more useful meeting space. Down on the bottom left, you can notice the living room. Obviously, it was a living room at the time and now it's a multipurpose space. And so many modifications needed to be addressed. And then the dining room on the right is now a serving area when there are functions there. And you can see just by necessity tile has been put down and some of the decorative columns have been wrapped in surfaces that are potentially easier to clean and maintain. Some other shots, you can kind of see that there's some ongoing maintenance items that need to be addressed in the masonry. And then on the right, a detail of that decorative column wrapped in a formica-like material. If we just pause for a second and just talk about what is mid-century modern? What are those things that we would want to preserve or understand when we think about this particular project? Because it is considered a fine example of mid-century When we think about this particular project, because it is considered, uh, a fine example of mid-century modern architecture. It really comes down to some very simple things, some clean, simple lines, honest use of materials and a real strong connection from the inside to the outside. So as we move forward and we think about the highest and best use of this facility, we want to make sure that whatever we do, we maintain its functionality, we increase potentially what can be done, but that we honor some of these original mid-century modern ideals. Now, what is it about, uh, O'Neil's Ford has personal style and working and changing this mid-century modern style that made it really unique? And he has several, uh, uh, projects throughout Texas, but we highlighted some here just to help you start to understand and see some of the things that we noted were consistence, consistent things. So if you look at the upper, uh, series of pictures, you'll notice that those hand carved details, the doors in particular, there are some screens that divide spaces throughout and the high use of wood and the exposure to wood and the warmth that that provides on the lower images, as you look through, you'll see very similar, the same things. There's a strong use of material, a strong use of texture throughout the, all of his projects. One of the things that was unique about O'Neil Ford is that he partnered a lot with his brother. His brother was a sculptor and an artist and, and in particular, he worked in wood. And these are some of the details that are from other projects that O'Neil Ford did where his brother actually, uh, carved some of these details. And we believe that the original doors from the facility were ones that his brother had carved. And here's just some more examples of some of Lynn Ford's work that were incorporated into his brother's architecture and made it a very unique and special style. Now, if we go to the outside of the building and we think about what was going on in, in terms of the mid-century modern style on the outside, well, the truth is, is the landscapes were all fairly, uh, fairly straightforward, very simple and very geometric. Um, and that certainly was the case originally at the Hedrick House. Now, some of that has had to have been changed and modified. But as we move forward, we want to find ways to get back to this, the spirit of the mid-century modern landscape. And of course, we want to do it in a way that's easy to maintain, but still maintain some of its, uh, some of this original ideals. Here are some other pictures. I know these are a little bit blurry, but they're from historic photos of what other, uh, garden experiences and landscape experiences were like. You can see the strong sense of geometry in these. Now let's just jump in and talk about how we got to the conclusions and what we did. We began the project really in earnest in June and really have just come up till today. And in that period, we had a number of workshops. As Stacy mentioned, we talked to a whole bunch of different folks within the city. We really tried to understand what the highest and best use for the facility, uh, wanted to be and use that as a way of sort of creating some of our priorities. These were some of the things that came up in terms of what we call our program or what is it that we want to do with the space? So all the lists on the left are some of those long lists of things that we'd like to accomplish. Everything from weddings to city events, uh, small local meetings, charity events, religious events, bridge club events, equipment rounds. All of those things are potential uses for the space. On the right-hand side are some of the things that we wanted to be able to upgrade, change, modify so that we could accomplish all the things on the left. And these are all things that we looked at, addressed and tried to find solutions for. Uh, helping us with this process was a firm called Mason Associates. Now they're a specialized engineering firm that goes through, uh, buildings just like this and looks at every system. They go through and study the roof, the envelope, look at accessibility issues, look at water, where it's going, site and drainage, parking, the parking surfaces, and then of course, mechanical plumbing and electrical systems and give their recommendations on the state of life of the current systems. How much longer it has, how, um, what should be replaced in their opinion, and then some recommendations on cost. We took all of these as, uh, sort of a baseline. We began with this and we thought about, uh, what we wanted to do with the slide prior to come up with kind of an objective of where we want to go. That led us to this, which is let's establish kind of what we're doing as a vision, how we want to get there and what are the overall goals for this particular project? And I'm not going to read these verbatim for you, but I just want to highlight what we found when we were creating this as a group. We wanted to make sure that O'Neil's Ford legacy was reimagined, but preserved both inside and out. We wanted to make sure that the, we, we prioritized, uh, our objectives in the master plan so that we would have a, um, you know, a true, uh, game plan for moving forward. In terms of vision, the most important things here that I want to capture is that we wanted to maximize the existing space for reuse and, and defined purposes that we shared. What that meant for us is that we weren't going to do a wholesale remodel or add a lot to this project. We wanted to use as much of what we, we had. And, and, uh, that set the tone for making, you know, and, and it's part of this was because of the preservation attitude I mentioned before. But we also thought that we could accomplish much of that laundry list of things that were important within the space that we currently had. We wanted to restore key components of the building and then we wanted to make it as energy efficient as we could. If you've ever been in a mid-century modern house, or if you've ever owned one, you know that they were built at a time where energy conservation and efficiency was not necessarily the highest priority. And so installation levels, double plane, uh, glass, all those sort of things were really things that came out in later generations. So uh, there is potentially a lot of work to do, uh, to make sure that we're raising the energy efficiency in this particular project. In terms of goals, we wanted to make sure that we included as many people as possible in the conversation. We feel we've done that. We wanted to make sure that we committed to a, an architectural program that was inclusive. Um, we wanted to make sure that we had a budget, but when we talked about it and when we share numbers with you later, we're really talking about the total project cost, meaning that we want to make sure that we're trying to think of all of the costs that would be necessary to execute the building. And of course, we wanted to give you a plan that stays within your current stated budget. And then we wanted to give you a sense of schedule and we wanted to make sure that you understood what it would take to execute, um, this plan. Okay, I'm going to take a little side journey here just for a few slides and help you understand some of the other things that influenced the designs that we came up with. We call them design threads. The first one was this idea of legacy. It became very important to us that O'Neil Ford's contribution and this very special property should be preserved in some way. Preserved in a way that we can celebrate it, educate people about its unique significance and really enjoy the fact that it's, it's, uh, it's, it's in as good a condition as it is and can actually be better. The other thing is we know that most of the events and things that people want to achieve in this build, in the building, really are about this. They're about having a memorable moment, a special place. This building is, is very unique. It's not like a hotel conference room. It's not like a multipurpose meeting room like you have in other places throughout the, throughout your city. The truth is, is that it's a very unique and somewhat intimate space. And so we want to celebrate that and find the right fit. Uh, and make it a really, uh, exceptional, exceptional space for memorable events. We wanted to celebrate the idea that it's not just a mid-century modern property, but it's got these handmade qualities about them. And we want to make sure that we celebrate those as much as we possibly can. And then finally, but probably most importantly in our list is we want to be sensible about this. We want to make sure that we make recommendations that preserve the function of the building, the energy efficiency of the building, and we come up with a plan that's executable where we're not reworking things as future phases might come into play. Okay, here's how we organized it. These are the three things really that, that are fundamental to this master plan. Number one is we have some significant deferred maintenance that we need to tackle right away. The second one is we want to make sure that we've studied the building in terms of its program functionality. And we want to make sure each space is multi-function as it can be, but we're not, uh, we're not, uh, uh, getting ourselves into a position where it's so specialized that it's only useful for a certain kinds of events. So we want to be very careful the way we describe the usability of the space. And then finally, we want to highlight, celebrate and find ways to in some ways preserve or recreate some of the terrific historic design elements that were part of the original design. So those three things sort of guide the next series of slides. As an introduction, if you haven't been out to the Hedrick House recently, this is a photo of what it looks like as you come onto the property. It's a very nice wooded property. It's, the house sits on its highest point. It's quite nice. Um, you can see though, that there's some, there's some, uh, work that needs to be done on the approach and on the parking areas as part of this plan. This is the drop-off area for the building. This is the backyard or the, the outdoor event space. And you can see on the right, some of the large glass areas are, some of the large event spaces spill out onto this area. Some more photos of the same, and you can see we've got a couple of tiers or elevations happening to work with. And then, um, as part of this too, we'll have to decide how much restoration we're going to do in terms of changing. When I mentioned before, some of the geometric qualities of the landscape, um, that's part of the mid-century modern theme, we'll want to make sure that we sort of play up some of the brickwork and other things and celebrate some of the things that's says, well, some of this just needs to be changed completely though. So let's start with the landscape and site concepts. Here's an overview of the property. You can see all the trees. You can see the existing parking area, the Hedrick House down on the bottom right, and then the event space, which is in the current backyard. Let's talk about, walk you through it a little bit. Some of the considerations that we'd like to put into this master planner that we have are that we'd like to see a new entry monument, some way to announce arrival onto the property. In addition, we'd like to work on opening up the views from this entry point to the house itself. We want to make sure that we can celebrate the journey from the entry all the way to the front door. Not only this, not only will this help people understand where to go, but I think it'll really highlight some of the special architectural qualities of the building from the moment you enter the site. We'd also like to consider reconfiguring the parking lot itself. We think that there's some opportunities here to not only make it more efficient, uh, in terms of parking cars, but uh, clean up and make more simple the arrival and departure sequence. Uh, we'd like to, uh, consider working on the vegetation, either removing some old vegetation at the front of the house. And we've got some suggestions on some improvements to that. And then we'd like to add some vegetation potentially along the alleyway, which is on the east side of the property. In this situation, we're looking at, uh, a bunch of houses here and we think that we could screen the events that are happening at the Hedrick House a little bit more. And this could be a symbiotic thing, you know, protecting the houses from events that might be happening at the Hedrick House and then vice versa. Um, making it feel like a more, uh, special, a special place when you're at the Hedrick House. And then the last one on here is more of a utilitarian thing and is providing a service access to the kitchen area uh, at the back of the property and then screening that back of the building, uh, from the neighbors, uh, along the, uh, adjacent, from the adjacent properties. Okay, so here's a bigger view. The gray area is the floor plan of the existing house. And then the shaded brown area are some of the existing areas. So when we say DG on the, uh, plan here, it means, uh, uh, decomposed granite or sort of a gravel that's existing there. And then there's a larger area next to it. What we'd like to consider right away is providing handicap access from a couple of directions out to this event area. So anyone arriving who needs that can go directly to the event space without having to necessarily go through the building. We'd also like to, um, consider adding a screen or some sort of background so that events could happen at that northern side of the space and better orient all of the activities to make better use of the space. Currently, uh, there is a, um, let me turn my pointer on here for a second. There is an existing, uh, background or event space right here, which is a series of trellises, uh, which are in need of repair. But because of their orientation, the, the events here are quite limited into gathering spaces right here. So by changing the orientation of the background, we believe we can have a more useful, uh, space to, for events. Uh, when we talk about, uh, adding some pavement areas, this is that idea of adding some geometric areas that improve circulation throughout the space, but also bring back some of that mid-century modern quality. We'd like to upgrade and improve the vegetation again to provide some of that screening, but also some more variety so that when you're in the backyard, in the event space, uh, it feels a little bit more enclosed. And then we've sized the event space in such a way where there's the potential to add a temporary tent, a 30 foot by 60 foot tent, which would work well in inclement weather or hot weather. We could extend the versatility of what's going on by offering that. And of course, in a COVID environment, having a, you know, something like this as an option could keep rentals happening even when we're at a diminished capacity. And then of course, as I mentioned before, we'd like to improve the service access for the caterers and anyone else who's servicing the event by providing them a way to put their equipment and access their equipment in the back of the house rather than having to go through the main, the main entry at the front. Here's some just pictures of, I'm sure you've all been to events where they've utilized tents, but again, just the idea of the versatility that this might offer on a temporary basis and increasing the versatility of what we've got, um, is appealing to us and, and exciting. In terms of plan concepts, um, I'll just review these really quickly. Um, we've got a couple of basic ideas. Uh, one is we want to talk to you about the entryway. We want to talk about what we're calling a bridal suite or flex space. There's the main event hall itself and, and the spaces that support it. There's some other areas that we would like to just suggest, uh, for remodel. They wouldn't change their function, but they would be uh, upgraded aesthetically. And then finally, we want to talk about the catering kitchen. So let's start with the grand entry. The grand entry is that portico chair. That's that drop-off area. We shared with you, uh, some photos of its existing. We still think that's a really important and strong, uh, piece of this project. All we'd like to do is improve its functionality. And what we mean by that right now is, uh, improving the exterior lighting around there to make it safer and easier to use. And then this is one area where we think it's very important to restore some of that, we call it historic sparkle or some of those key elements that hearken back to the spirit of O'Neil Ford. And these things could be in, in coming up with, um, you know, replacing those plain doors that are currently there now with some recreations of carved doors in the spirit of, of, of O'Neil's brother Lynn. Um, and that would be important because it's the very first thing that you, that you encounter and it would really set the tone for the experience, uh, within. In addition to that, we would look at doing some decorative screening and that would be on the outside edges here, uh, along this edge. And that's very reminiscent of many of O'Neil Ford's projects where he did some, uh, horizontal work there, not, not unlike this or here, that sort of gives some character to the front of the building. When we talk about the bridal suite, this was actually the master bedroom in the original plan. And right now it's a storage room. And what we imagine that this could be converted into fairly easily actually is, is a multipurpose smaller space. And so if a wedding is being held, it could certainly be the bridal suite, but it could also be, uh, rented out or used as a meeting or activity room. To do that, to increase this program functionality, we would, uh, we would modify some of the mill work. We would turn the, the restroom that's existing into, uh, ADA compliant. We would, um, change the, rearrange the changing area a little bit and we'd add some more amenities, including lighting and, uh, things for like a coffee bar. In terms of historic sparkle in this space, it fairly simply, it's just working on lighting and upgrading some of the wood paneling that's there. Fairly straightforward solution there. Here are some ideas, you know, it can be configured in a number of ways. Uh, you can imagine a board meeting there, an HOA meeting there potentially. There could obviously be even a card game or something, but, and then of course, imagine it as a bridal suite where it's configured with couches and chairs and things like that. When we move into the main event space, um, now this is very functional as it stands right now, but what we'd like to do is we'd like to work more on the acoustics, the lighting, and we'd like to work on the flooring. It feels very dated right now and really just needs an aesthetic upgrade. It is an opportunity to work on some of this historic sparkle too. The lighting fixtures that are in the space currently, while functional, really, um, don't speak at all to the original design or the original flair of, um, O'Neil Ford. And potentially we could, that could be one area in addition to the door and the screens, probably one of the most significant ways that we could reintroduce some of that handmade quality into the overall experience. And so the lighting then would be really important in this event space. Along this back wall here is where we'd look to do some more decorative woodwork, maybe some of this screening kind of effect. Again, we're trying to just be strategic where we use it, but this would be, this would have a big effect because as you walked into the building, it would, your eyes, it would be one of the main things that you saw within the building when you walked in. Some of the areas that really just need an upgrade and a refresh include the bathrooms as well as, uh, there's another, uh, uh, room here that's used for the, as we, it's called the groom's room or uh, it's really just a, a, a support room for an event. But it, they're dated and they need some upgrading. And so from a functional point of view, again, we'd like to upgrade the fixtures in those spaces, upgrade the flooring and the tile and the lighting. In terms of that historic sparkle or considerations for that, again, it's quite simply, it's working on lighting and then upgrading the features, um, uh, like the sinks and the counters. You'll notice that almost in every single slide here, uh, one consistent theme when we talk about historic sparkle is lighting. And it really is. And it's one of those things that we can do relatively inexpensively and have a really major And it really is. And it's one of those things that we can do relatively inexpensively and have a really major effect in how the building feels and functions. So let's go to the, what we is considered right now, kind of the back of houses, the catering kitchen and the serving area. From a program point of view, we still need this to function as a catering kitchen and a serving area. But what we'd like to do is we'd like to improve it with renewed casework, renewed appliances, again, better lighting. And we'd like to upgrade the flooring and bring it back to a more sympathetic style that works with the overall architecture. And in terms of that historic sparkle, we're looking again to do some casework, some paneling and again, work with interior lighting. So it's not a lot of, of change in these spaces, but we believe it'll be quite functional. One of the things that we were thinking about could be very, very useful is adding some of these screens at the doorway. Where this serving area is, and these could be something like these here down on the bottom of the screen, not, not that exact style, but that spirit. And the idea is that not only does it add texture and that wood quality and warmth to the experience, but functionally, it would be a way to screen off that serving area. So that, that area could be set up and chain or changed during an event and not interrupt the event itself. So there is some functionality to that as well. In terms of just overall design elements, and we're, and we're getting close to the end here, I promise. But we wanted to point out some of those areas when we talk about some of the highest priority things that we can do to bring the character of the original building back into the project. It's these little things. It's the, it's the potentially the woodwork in the staging or the, the serving area. It's the bringing back the fireplace, which has now been covered over with Formica panels and acoustic panels. And it's reworking the doors and trying to find ways that we can bring that sense of texture and quality back into the building by celebrating the doors. When we talked about these acoustics, we can still bring the, the warmth of wood in and still work on acoustics as well. There's a lot of terrific products out there and ways that we don't have to have just fabric, which is what's currently in the facility. We do not have to have just fabric as an acoustic element. We can actually use wood. The fabric and absorption happens behind the wood panels. And you can kind of see, we've outlined some highlighted areas where we can take advantage of that. To overcome one of the biggest challenges of space like this is how do you make it a comfortable place to be acoustically? And then on the outside as well as the inside, we want to find, and we haven't, we're not suggesting a particular style yet. But we just know this idea of the screens is a big deal. And we want to find a really fun pattern that really speaks to the original design, celebrates what O'Neal Ford was trying to do. And unites the inside and the outside experience. Lighting, as I mentioned, we think it's one of the most important things and impactful things that we can do. There are many options here. We're showing several ideas here, but we're just celebrating that idea of what can we do in the mid-century modern character? And then of course, over here, really find ones that speak to the spirit of O'Neal Ford that have the more of that handmade quality whenever possible. I think the idea would be that we create as much usable light as we possibly can, but not necessarily have it be based on fixtures. You can see in this upper left picture, how this room is filled with light, but the fixtures aren't the thing you notice. It's the quality of the light itself. When we have work to do and tasks to be done, of course, we'll have to find fixtures that highlight work surfaces and work areas. But then of course, what we really want to do is we find that historic sparkle. And that will be one of the big challenges moving forward is trying to find, you know, fixtures that really speak to this and celebrate it. But probably one of the most rewarding things as well. And then finally, this idea of a monument sign, of course, we haven't designed anything yet, but we do think it's really important. And in the spirit of all your projects that you're doing in Lewisville to find a really great way to welcome people to the site. Let them know they've arrived. And here are just some examples of other ones that are, that are successful. So when we get to the budget. I, and here's kind of how we broke it up. We broke it into two phases. And the reason we broke it into two phases is because we had a target budget of about $900,000 that we wanted to hit for phase one. And then everything else would fall into phase two. The three things that I mentioned before in terms of our, the way we, the buckets, if you will, that we put the money into. Deferred maintenance, our top priority in each phase. Program functionality again, and I'll, I'll explain that a little bit. And then that historic design, what is that sparkle thing that we can do? In each of these phases to make sure that we're moving towards that direction for a completed project. So let me just break this down briefly for you. And I know you've got the detail in your packet, so we don't, I won't go, I'll answer any questions that you have specifically. But just to give you an overview of, of how it's organized and why. Under the phasing priorities, you can kind of see here, these are our deferred maintenance items. And they're everything from roofing, building envelope, accessibility, site and drainage, and then all of the systems that we've got. And that comes to just under $300,000 of our $900,000 budget. In terms of functionality, you can see we've got a chunk going towards the parking lot and trying to improve that arrival experience. And that service entrance for functionality on the backside of the building. The rest of the money is really going towards interior improvements. So invent, event space improvements, the serving area. And we do have a very modest and small addition. Because as I mentioned before, we're taking that bridal suite, which is currently a storage room and we're trying to make it functional. We do need to find a place to put those tables and chairs. And so we're suggesting a very small and modest addition on the backside of the building, which would handle that. And that you see up here as storage addition at $40,000. And then the big focal area here in phase one for the historic design is that grand entry, as I mentioned before. It's the, it's the, it's the doors and it's that entry experience. When we go to phase two, there are still some deferred maintenance items, but they're lower. They were, they were not as immediate, but still very important. So we would finish off the roof in phase two. In terms of its replacement, we would add more insulation. And then once we got to the site, we would add the entry monument, additional vegetative work. We'd do some, some other upgrades as well. And then the main thing here on the interior is that phase two is when we would tackle the brides room and the kitchen. So those are the main priority areas here. And I should say that when we were trying to decide what fell into priority one and priority two. We had a lot of conversations with everyone involved and we really were trying to balance these three things. You know, what are the things that are going to be most important in terms of our deferred maintenance? What are those things that are going to increase the functionality and let us do as much as we possibly can? And then, and then finally, how can we make sure that we're being true to the spirit of O'Neal Ford and trying to find that historic sparkle and at every stage of the, of the project? In this phase two, one, you can see it's the, it's the decorative fireplace that fell into that category. Phase two construction, you can see is about $600,000. So that's a quick breakdown. I'm sorry it was so fast and I didn't give you any airspace to ask questions. I was really just trying to give you that overview and, and hope that in your review that you've got some questions for me. But I'll pause and I'll offer Stacy, did I leave anything out that you would like to highlight and then open it up for questions?
No, I think you hit it all. I'm interested to hear the reaction of the council members and get some feedback. Great job.
So Mayor Council, we've been spending time with you over the last several meetings, updating you on a, on a variety of capital projects. This was just one more. We wanted to update you on to, to make sure we're on track with your expectations related to Hedrick House. Obviously to do both phases is a budget issue. So we do have a little over $900,000 in our 4B budget for Hedrick House for phase one. As we move forward, if council is supportive of the second phase. We would need to come up with additional funding, which is available in your 4B budget. So with that, we would open it up for questions or comments.
Do we need to walk down the list for a while or just place one? Why don't you go ahead and start?
So Mayor, really all I wanted to do is get this before council to make sure that we were on track. What council was interested in in relation to this project. And if I don't hear that we're, if I hear that you are supportive, we're going to move forward.
Okay. Or just go through the list, go quick. Go ahead, go ahead and start with your.
I'm certainly supportive of everything that I've seen. I've been to several, several events there through Rotary and Chamber and a few other things. And one of the things that people always talk about is how. How. One thing they talk about is how sterile it looks. And I really like making it, making it more personable, bringing, taking it back to its former glory or whatever we want to call it. But I'm for it.
Okay. Councilmember Ferguson.
Good evening. Hi Mick, Bill, Craig, how are y'all? So it will come as no surprise to Donna or Stacy or staff. I have had a long time love affair with O'Neal Ford. This is my reference book. I don't know if y'all have ever read this book. I've owned this book since the mid 1990s. I think it was published in 92 or one or somewhere around there. And have visited a lot of his, his properties. I have. Well, I'm not going to go on too long. I, I want to make first of all, this statement. We have the privilege in Lewisville of owning a Herb McNairy bronze that's twice life size. Recently added to that and Andy Dufford carved mural that celebrates the flyway. To me, O'Neal Ford is the third jewel in the artistic crown that Lewisville, you know, is likely to have. I would say the fourth jewel, by the way, is Mother Nature and Lila, but that thought aside. With, with Ford, it's interesting because my next door neighbors, as Donna knows, had two O'Neal Ford houses. And unfortunately they fell into horrible disrepair. I almost ended up buying them, but found out they were in horrible condition and eventually they were leveled. I did beg the city to salvage some of the Beaumont Mood lighting fixtures. And I can't remember if I begged them to save the door from one of the houses, but it's probably not around. The fixtures are somewhere. But I want to talk for a minute about Beaumont Mood because. When you look at O'Neal Ford, the way he designed things, there was a lot of natural, he used a lot of natural elements. He really liked, you know, his wood and his natural elements. And he had a real love affair with Beaumont and Martha Mood for light fixtures. Just like he did with his brother for door, carved doors. And so I saw the pictures that you had at the beginning, particularly a number of mood light fixtures. And then towards the end, we saw some other light fixtures. It's, I would, I don't want to go down a long road here, but I would like time Craig to sit and talk to you about. My thoughts on the light fixtures in particular. And the reason is that they are just, that's just integral, integral with every O'Neal Ford project that I've ever seen. They just go hand in hand. It was, you know, he didn't design furniture like Frank Lloyd Wright. He didn't design light fixtures, but he did find artists to work with that sort of filled out his palette. And so the problem with mood fixtures, and then I'll shut up pretty quickly, is that they come and go on the market. They, I saw three cylinders sell in New York, I think this year or last year. You know, they show up, but they don't tend to show up in large matched numbers. So you'll get two of this, one of that. It can be a real hodgepodge. So then it becomes a conundrum of how do you acquire those fixtures to use? And I'm going to talk in a second and then I really will shut up about how that I think you use them. But how do you acquire fixtures to use when you can't, he used, tend to use, you know, the same pattern and style repeatedly in a space. And those are hard to come by. Finding more than two or three of something is, is scarce. The other thought about using the lighting fixtures is that quite frankly, they're spectacular. And the way that they're perforated makes the room truly sparkle, but they aren't the best source of light. And so, so you know, the thought there is that these then become accent pieces that absolutely belong in this house. But you don't look to have them serve as truthfully as great, you know, lighting function. But they need to be there. So I, I don't know what our arts budget is. I don't know if we want to reexamine it. But I would like to see alongside Herb McNairy and Andy Dufford and O'Neal Ford. Beaumont and Martha Mood put on the, the list of things that we have. And, and this is the very place where it belongs. And the city already has a few that were salvaged from the house that got torn down next to me. And, and I have a few that I've vacillated on what I might do with them. But I do want to, I, I want to emphasize that I think if they're not there. In addition to functional lighting, but if they're not there, if we just kind of default to like that little trumpet shaped MCM lights that you showed. We missed, we really missed the opportunity. So, and so I'll leave you with that, but we, I'd love to talk to you more.
Agree a hundred percent with you, a hundred percent. So love to spend time with you.
I made note of a comment you made. You said the doors and the lighting are the most significant ways we can reintroduce mid-century modern. And I agree. So, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Um, I grew up being a huge fan of Frank Woodwright and Midmod. I like it. I want it. Let's have it. I yield.
Okay. Councilmember Jones.
I'm all good. Start with the price. I'm an accountant.
Okay. Is.
No, Mayor, she's not present this evening.
Okay, she's not here. That's it. My comments are. I've been around the house since the sixties, but the. I don't think we ever got right on how to have the house function as a, as a meeting space. And still have a lot of the elements of the residential part of it. And so we need to work on that. And the access to the property has always been an issue. And there was some talk at one time with Kevin come from Garden Ridge. And it's probably prohibited because of the creek that's back there. But it's also something else we've been talking about. That's all I have. I'm in favor of all this.
Donna, do you have one question? Have we looked at the possibility of grants as a funding source for any of this?
Oh, we have not explored that, Councilman. We certainly can. 4B has been our source of revenue for this project. And as you know, we do have some funding opportunities there in 4B. But as always, Stacy's very good at going out and finding grants. So we'll certainly be looking for that as well as what you mentioned earlier, related to the light fixtures. That might be more James's shop as far as more art type grants. But I think this is an exciting project for the city. I think we definitely have the right architectural firm here. And so the staff is really excited about what this can be. You know, I think one of the mistakes we made, and you know, we took, whether it's Lake Park or we're working on that master plan right now or Hedrick House. We took something, a facility and tried to make it all things, right? So as the mayor said, we never really got the use right. So I think as we step back and, and we bring back the O'Neal Fortness to this facility. Use is going to, is going to change, I think fairly dramatically. And we'll be bringing those concepts back to you. But tonight I wanted to get this in front of you. So that, to make sure we're on the right track and if we are to start moving forward with the project. And you will see this coming back to you several times. And certainly, yes, Councilman, we will be looking for grants.
And I know you know how excited I am to see this finally. I've been, you know, begging for this for years, just to save this house.
Absolutely. And certainly, you know, I remember walking into this house in 1990 and how much better it looked in 1990. So I am excited also to be able to focus on returning it to the, the great piece of art that it truly is. So Craig, we thank you for your presentation tonight. As always, I think we have our direction. Anything else, we can move to the next item.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Craig, great job.
So Council, we have one more item. I made your workshop pretty long tonight, so bear with me. We do have one additional item. We brought this to you earlier. You gave us some direction. So staff has gone back and they've looked at options. And so we have a proposal to bring before you tonight related to food trucks, both in parks and in the city in general. And so I'm going to turn it over to Claire and Stacy. And so I'm going to turn it over to Claire and Stacy.
So this is going to be a group effort again. It'll be Stacy, myself and Chris McGinn. So we'll go to the next slide. So we visited with City Council on August 3rd. And we got some consensus on some of the topics and some of them there was not consensus. And so this is the direction we got from Council. First, they, you had directed us to create an SUP process for food truck parks. And that is going to be part of the code overhaul project. That's already been sent to our consultants for review and drafting. And also, the idea is if a developer comes in and needs an expedited amendment, we can always process that. We don't have anyone who's clamoring to get in like in the next couple of months. But if so, then we can process that pretty quickly. Also, Council directed us to create a program to allow food trucks in designated parks. And so Stacy next is going to go through her program that she's proposing to City Council. And then finally, to approve current regulations for food trucks not covered by these other programs or by a special event program, a permit. So if you remember, we had that wonky rule that said, that was basically done for construction, construction trucks that would go around feeding different construction sites. And the rule was that they have to be, they have to be moved 10 minutes after their last customer. So there were some enforcement issues with the 10 minute after the last customer rule. But also with regard to what we wanted to do with food trucks, there was discussions related to that. So we're going to go to the next slide. And this is really Stacy's presentation, the first part. And then we'll move into Chris's part in the second.
Great. So Mayor, Council, park fans, and remember when we started talking about the possibility of this, we thought that we would, we would look at some parks that we could pilot a program at. And we've chosen five parks that we'd like to start at. And some of them have to do with their remoteness and lack of access to food services nearby, but also areas that we might want to activate and have some extra presence in the park. So we're looking at two spaces over and up to two spaces in railroad near the skate park and dog park. You'll notice that the, the park is equipped with three concession stands, but they're all in the area over where the ball fields are. And we get a lot of business at the dog park and at the skate park that would, would benefit from having some additional services, additional amenities there. I mean, you know, a dog park's not really for dogs. It's for people who have dogs. And they like to hang out and congregate. And it also might be an opportunity for us to alleviate some of the stress that the concession stands have during large tournaments. During the lacrosse tournament this weekend, we got great kudos from the coordinators. But one of the things they asked for is additional places for their patrons to, to find some food or something to drink. We're thinking about also having up to two at Memorial Park near Thrive so that we can kind of engage that, the patrons who come to Thrive to work out at their lunch hour and they'd be able to grab something to eat and run to work. And maybe early in the morning, having a coffee shop out there or coffee truck. And then looking at Central Park near the pavilions, as well as looking at Lake Park as we start working our way through our master plan, identifying places that we might look at food trucks. And one of the things that we've talked to the core about is the possibility of partnering with Arcus Golf, who already has a lease with us, to expand their services to serve out of their concession stand at the golf course. And that might make it an easier transition for us there. And then of course, looking at having one at the, at the Future Park in the Triangle to help activate a new space, but also to, to bridge a food desert gap there. Next slide. And so some of the criteria that we would have for being part of this program is you would have to have a mobile food vendor permit with the city. We're looking at trying to attain some of our sustainability goals and asking them to have compostable dinnerware, not using straws, which become a litter nightmare in the park system. Making sure that one item meets nutritional requirements for children and adults out of the National Restaurant Association Live Well Program. That they must stay in their designated locations within a park once they're, once we've designated a park for them to work at. And that they must adhere to the park curfew. They wouldn't be there any longer than the, the park is open. And this, we wouldn't ask them to be there constantly. We would just ask them to be there consistently, to set hours and honor them on a regular basis. We want to make sure that they have a clean vehicle and appearance of their immediate area, picking up extra trash that might be generated by the service. We'll make sure that they have extra trash cans out there and so that they can use for their extra refuse. And one of the things we want to encourage is once they've been permitted, that we get no or limited complaints from other park fans, our park rangers, our law enforcement officers. We're also going to be working with the, not only with PD to keep an eye on them, but also our Neighborhood Services Group. Next slide. So the nutritional requirements we're talking about come out of the National Restaurant Association, their Live Well and Healthy Dining Programs. And these will be the, the touch points we want each of the vendors to hit with one of their food items, trying to encourage healthy eating and making sure that these food trucks just aren't glorified concession stands in the park system. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of a comparison of what other cities do. Every city has some sort of mobile vending permit fees. We charge 300. Our comparison cities have somewhere between 115, $500. And then each, each city offers a seasonal or prorated options for those. We haven't found many of our comparison cities who actually offer food truck permits for their parks specifically. Most of them limit them to special events, just like James and his crew do at Wayne Ferguson Plaza or some of our other special events. But Clyde Warren Park does have one and they have a flat fee plus a monthly percentage. They weren't really too excited to share that with us, so we didn't publish it. And then I've worked in a couple of organizations and managed concessions. In Austin, we had a permit that per season, which was about six months, was either 500 to 1500 dollars for the entire season. It was a flat fee. Now, when I worked in Corpus Christi, we had various concessions from our backyard parks out to the beach where we would charge 350 dollars per month, per spot. So that's kind of the, the landscape of where, what we are looking at when we're trying to create our program. And so the next slide shows what we're proposing after some conversations with other staff members and with our Parks Board. What we'd like to propose is that our, that this program start out to being seasonal from March to September with a seasonal fee of 150 dollars for that entire season and 3% of monthly gross sales that will be paid to the department or to the city. That'll be due the 10th of each month of the following month. And so that's really the, the beginning structure we want to start at. We think it's reasonable. If the, the vendor is not making a lot of money, then, you know, 3% scalable, right? It'll remain the same and wouldn't be too taxing. If, once we get through the initial season, one of our food vendors has met all their criteria and continued to be a good partner, we'd offer them to continue through the off season at just 3% monthly gross sales with no seasonal fee. There's not a lot of traffic at that time. And at that time, it'd probably become a weekend type offering. But that's what we're proposing right now. And I see your, your comment, Councilwoman Jones. I'd be happy to take you up on that offer to track down that information from Clyde Warren. So what we would do if approved, we'd have an application process where in January, we'd call for applications. And in February, we would select, select an award, our vendors who are going to work with us. They go through the mobile food vendor application portal that we have with the, with the city. And we would not get an application unless they met the first requirement, which is they have a vendor, a vending permit, a mobile food vending permit from the city. And then if they met the rest of the criteria, we would look at the preferences for location within the system that each of the vendors had, had listed. And if there is a vendor, a number of vendors who want the same location, we'd do a lottery draw for competing preferences, but only if they met established criteria and didn't have overlapping services. At the end of the season, like I said, we do an evaluation to determine if they met criteria throughout the season. And if they did, then they'd be eligible to be considered for the following season. If they didn't, if we got a lot of complaints, they didn't pay their monthly fee on time, we would consider them, we wouldn't consider them for the following season. Next slide. So just a summary, we'd be looking at a call for applications coming up in January, selecting our, our vendors in February, looking at a season of March to September. And, you know, a couple of the things that we're looking at is one, to create additional presence in the park to help us activate them, provide some additional services for our park fans, and also look at additional revenue stream to re-infuse into the park system to help keep it up to date. And that's all I've got. Any questions?
Stacy, just quick question.
Yes.
Is this something that we can market and put out through communication? Or do we run into some issues with that like we do with Old Town where we have to kind of make it generic?
So I don't understand the question. I'm sorry.
I'm just curious if there's an idea to, to market this? And, and if so, is, does it run into some of the issues that we have where we can't really advertise a specific business for Old Town, but we, we can do, you know, broad strokes? I'm just curious how that works.
Right. Yeah, I think it would probably be more broad strokes. And just like our, with our contract vendors who offer different types of aerobic classes, we would really depend on them to do a lot of the marketing. We would ask to see any of the marketing that they do and make sure that they're not trying to, you know, they're doing stuff that aligns with what the city's vision for the park system are. But it would be tough to market specifically for one vendor. But we can do some good broad stroke type things. And remember, this will be at places that our Play Lewisville on Will's unit visits and tries to activate. So maybe there's some stuff we could do in tandem.
So Council.
I have a question for Stacy. If a vendor chooses not to use their space for a full, you know, full time, might several vendors share the same space if they schedule properly?
That is something that our Parks Board sort of brought up in terms of us being flexible. We would really have to look and monitor that because what we would want, wouldn't want to do is that people are subleasing their space out to other vendors. So right now, my inclination is to say, let's go one space per vendor and see how that works out and figure out how we need to be flexible as we work our way through our first system, first season. Just to protect that, that we have control of how that space is used for the moment.
So Council, any other questions?
Stacy?
Yes, sir.
So I'm trying to remember where I thought I heard this, whether it was sitting in on the Parks Board meeting or the last council meeting, or, you know, maybe I dreamed it up. But, and it's not necessarily concerned the first year. But wasn't there some discussion about rotating where vendors would be different parks over time so that it's not always the same vendor at the same park year after year after year? And, you know, you'd never get to find out what that other park had, so to speak?
Yes, sir. That's one of the things that the board, the board talked about was making sure that we're not locked into one certain system after the first season so that we can kind of evaluate whether having the singular spot that they can't move from is beneficial or if we need to be a little bit more flexible. Permit, permit a number of, of vendors for the total number of spaces and let them, where we would assign them on certain days. So we're going to, we're going to start out with, you're assigned to one spot and that's where you need to stay. But we're going to listen to, to our vendors and our, our park fans about what's working for them and be flexible. And anything that we would bring back to you will include those recommendations that we hear from them.
So an additional to that and related to it is that if we, if we do start, you know, having a given truck at a given location for a certain length of time, and then we kind of switch out and try a different product there, it gives us the opportunity to really evaluate who's successful and who's not. If we stick with the same vendor at the same location, you know, on and on and on, then all we've really discovered is how, possibly how successful that location is or unsuccessful. In other words, you can't separate the success from the product. But if you rotate products, then you can separate the two. Do you follow me?
Yes.
So my, I get, my, my, my question is how do we activate these spaces? Because the way, the way of my understanding how these food trucks work is they need so many people, so many customers that are, that are going to be in place like Clyde Warren Park. I kind of understand their, their operation a little bit. Basically, they're in a place where they, they basically are centralized where they get a lot of people who come to that location because that's what's going to get you the, those food trucks to, to come out. If they're not making any money, that's going to get us in trouble if we spread them too thin or, you know, we send them to a location that's not active. So that's my, how are we going to address to make sure that they have bodies basically to purchase their goods?
Right. So there's, there's a couple of, of things for that is one, a lot of food trucks have a, a, a pretty good following and have a good social media and, and guerrilla marketing system that we'll ask them to activate. But then that, just like we said when I was talking, responding to Councilmember Gilmore's question, is that we'll do some, our own marketing ourselves from a general large standpoint. But then when pairing it up with some of our plow deployment and activation events out at the parks. The other thing is, is that at railroad and Lake Park, they're going to have captive audiences when we have events and just general weekends out at those parks. So I think once we make it known that they're out there and the guerrilla marketing that, that food trucks have and do, I think those things paired together will really help kick that off. And then also, when we look at the Triangle Park, that truly is a food desert. There's not a lot of great food that people can access and, and get there. So I think that will also, just by sheer need, will help fuel the, the success of that, those programs.
Hey Stacy. Before we move on to the next slide, I think Councilmember Jones had messaged you through the normal message on Zoom. It has to be read. We can't see it from, from our screen. Can you just read aloud what his message was? Liz is asking that.
Oh, sure. That he can get information from Clyde Warren. He might have some access to, to the Clyde Warren Park's fee that they charge their food vendors.
Thank you. Okay.
So certainly, Mayor and Council, I think this will be a learning process for us. Stacy's got some pretty solid experience herself dealing with this. But we'll move forward with this project and we'll come back with you, to you with changes as, as we learn how best to operate. With that, I'm going to turn it back with, to Claire, and she's going to talk about food trucks, Claire and Chris. Talk about food trucks, food trucks in the city in general.
So the last thing that was left undecided was how to improve our current regulations on food. was how to improve our current regulations on food trucks. And these are food trucks that are not part of that food truck parks, which we got direction from council that you wanted to have it by SUP. It's food trucks that are operating not under a special event or temporary health permit and not any food trucks that are operating under Stacy's new program. So these are food trucks that are just operating throughout the city. And right now, it's the general regulations say they have to move within 10 minutes of their last customer. So Chris is gonna, Chris has put together kind of how, reading between the lines of what council had said in the last meeting, what the consensus was and what, where there was still some disagreement. So he's going to go through that.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. This particular area was a little bit more difficult to look at. But, but you know, what were, what were some of the areas of consensus that we have based off of the last workshop on, on August 3rd? Maintaining the permitting standards, I think there was consensus with, with city council that we, we continue to do that. That would also include maintaining commissary logs, meaning that these trucks, at the end of the night, they were checking into locations that were inspected by a health department, even if they're outside of the city of Louisville, but they're, they're getting clean water, discharging dirty water, storing any of their food in a location that is inspected by a health department. I think we all can agree that that's, that's what we want for, for the food trucks. Location limitations, these are items that are currently in our city ordinance. And the benefits of this, we've seen for many years that, that they've, they've been in the city ordinance. Having distance requirements from schools that we don't have issues with traffic congestion of food trucks near schools. Also, making sure that food trucks aren't piggybacking off of a, a special event or a city-operated event, that they're, they have the distance requirements there. If they are interested, they have to go through the process of being part of the city event. Not vending in residential areas from any street median or sidewalk of the city, just for safety issues. In addition to that, also making sure that none of the trucks are vending in locations that would be an area of fire lane or blocking traffic for egress of a required parking lot, that they're not taking up space in required parking and that, or any other area that, that would remain obstructed by, by an engineering site plan. We, we all agree that, you know, the owner of the property, that food truck should be getting written authorization, written agreement stating that they have permission to be at that location and that there's access to bathrooms within 500 feet. We also mentioned that some of the things that we've seen in the past, that some of these food trucks may go a little bit overboard with their signage and that we agreed that we wanted to limit that signage, limit the amount of tables and chairs that they can put out just by the, by the way that that looks. And also the difficulty with staff being able to try and enforce 10 minutes after the last customer. We needed some language there that was a little bit more easier for, for staff to enforce. City of Benton went through that a few years ago where they removed that language from their ordinance because it was, they were running into the very same issue. Next slide, please. Areas of debate. So we kind of had some things that were in, in all areas here talking about should food trucks be required to be auxiliary to the primary use? Auxiliary would mean that, that we're providing that service to the, to the primary use of occupancy. So like, for example, if we have a brewery or a distillery tour, that food truck would operate adjacent to, to that location that has significant occupancy. You know, the location of that truck must be directly adjacent to an outdoor patio or be oriented clearly to, to serve the employees and patrons for the primary use of, of that building and not to attract or solicit business from, from neighboring streets or the public in general. It was basically there for the purpose of, of that, of that business, to assist that business. So we had, we had some things kind of all over the board, you know. Should we do this? Should we not? Also, should, should we require consent of neighboring food establishments in order to do this? You know, I'm the property owner of this facility and I want this food truck to be, for example, service of this tour that I'm getting ready to have. Do I necessarily have to get permission from a restaurant that may be within whatever distance requirements set up to, to say, hey, I want this food truck on my property. I want to get your permission. And so there were some things kind of all over there of whether, because we, you know, there, there are some issues with brick and mortar restaurants not necessarily liking a food truck. And what should be that distance for the, for the area of consent? We heard a lot of different distances there and, and you know, what specifically should we decide on there? Also, the amount of time a vehicle can, can remain stationary. We, we came up with that, yeah, we need, we need a little bit of flexibility in that area. But what, what specific should we have put in place? Next slide, please. Council's general goals, you know, here, here's kind of what, what I was seeing based off of the, the workshop that we wanted to kind of get to this, to this general goal or this end area. The majority of council wanted to protect the investments of the brick and mortar restaurants. We've got a, a lot of restaurants that are interested in, in coming to Louisville. You know, right now, that's becoming more and more difficult for a restaurant to make that decision. And we don't necessarily want to hinder that part of it. But we also wanted to, to make sure that we were allowing food trucks in areas where, where it made sense. Not necessarily a handshake from a store owner saying, yeah, you can park your truck here for the rest of the day on a street corner and it just happens to be an overlay district. And, and so, you know, we, we wanted to have food trucks where it, where it made sense. We also wanted to give neighboring properties an opportunity to show support or express concern. There's a lot of different situations where food trucks want to be and those responses from neighboring properties can differ. The majority of residents may want this or, you know, some may not. And, and, and each case is a little bit different. And that kind of got us to the direction of, of looking at, you know, applications on a case-by-case basis. There, there's not, there's not a whole lot of, of things outlined that gives any guidelines to mobile vendors other than specific health regulations. Texas Restaurant Association doesn't have any guidelines specifically for mobile vendors. And so again, referring to our survey in the last workshop, we were got, we're getting a lot of responses on regulations for food trucks and they're kind of all over the board.
So given, I think one of the difficulties with our last conversation was that staff was trying to provide a one-size-fits-all solution. And really, the feedback we got, reading between the lines with all the discussion from council was that really, it was that one-size-fits-all doesn't really make sense for Louisville. And that there really needed to be, there were lots of contingent questions. Well, like, well, you know, what type of businesses are around them? What if it's in a parking lot that is a very large parking lot and just across the ways, there's a, you know, a business that might be affected by this? And so really, that, that reflected that case-by-case basis. So we know there is one tool that has worked for us very well for case-by-case basis and looking at that, and that is the SUP. And where our, council's already directed us to, for food truck parks, to require an SUP. And it is very easy to extend that to just an individual food truck. And other cities have done that as well. I think if you remember when we came back, we were with you before, we did a survey of our comparison cities and everyone's all over the map. So it's not like, you know, everyone's using the SUP as a tool, but it has been used in the past. So what we're recommending is to require an SUP for a food truck to remain stationary more than 15 minutes on a specific site. So instead of doing that 10-minute after last customer, we're, we're saying 15 minutes total. So that, that addresses the enforcement issue that we had talked about earlier. The other aspect is that SUP gives you that flexibility. It would be issued not to a, a food truck operator, but to the owner of the property where they want the food truck to be located. And so that means if an SUP was to be given to a property owner, that would allow food trucks, as long as they're permitted within the city, to come, stay there for as long as that business is operational during the day. They could have multiple food trucks come during the day. They just have a right to have a food truck in that particular location. The benefits to this approach is it allows that council can do that site-specific analysis. It provides notice to those neighboring properties and provides us and provides them with an opportunity to give input. It also provides greater flexibility for food trucks when it makes sense because it's not a one-size-fits-all. SUP conditions can also include all of those things that council had agreed upon for those requirements, those bathrooms requirements, the signage, location requirements. Those can also, those can be built into that SUP ordinance as additional conditions on, on that use. And then you can also tailor it to the particular conditions on that particular location of the surrounding uses. So for example, if it makes sense because of that specific location of this business that wants a food truck to have differing hours of operation, we can put those as conditions. If you want, if the location of the truck is really best to be tucked behind a patio instead of, you know, out in a parking lot because the neighbor, the neighbors were particularly concerned about it, they brought up those issues, that can also be tailored to that. The other important thing to know is that the timing on the adoption of this SUP requirement, if, if council's interested in going this direction, is we are suggesting not doing it until after the park, park program starts a lot of food trucks. And the reason why is because particularly the, the, the food truck operator that is operating out of that Valley, the Valley Creek Church parking lot, the Business 121 location, we know that the 7-Eleven there, which is a food establishment, doesn't particularly want them in that location. Now, that doesn't mean they can't go elsewhere on that lot and that couldn't be a good solution for them. But we would like to reach out to them to try to see, to, to let them know that we are going to start opening up our parks and see if they're interested in finding a spot in our, in our parks as well. Obviously, they'd have to go through the same process as everyone else would, but at least reaching out to them. The other thing, if council's interested in this SUP requirement that we would be asking you is, right now, SUPs have a normal zoning notice requirement. So letters are sent out to property owners nearby. But realize that's only to property owners, not to business operators. So council, in our last discussion, was very interested about getting input from food service establishments that are currently operating. That, that, these notices for zoning for an SUP case would not necessarily get to those operators. Now, there would be a zoning sign put out there, but it would just say pending SUP. It wouldn't say specifically what it was for. We could request, if council's interested, to have, when we have these SUPs come forward, that we would ask the applicant provide written notification to all food service establishments within 300 or 500 feet. We wanted to give you a sense of what those spaces were from two, two particular cases we know that might be interested in having a food truck SUP. One is Bent Distillery. So that's on your left. And it shows you the radius from 300 feet and 500 feet of what those notice, notices would go to. So Salvation Army does have a food service establishment permit. And then there used to be a restaurant right next door. I cannot remember the name of that restaurant.
Oh, that was the important?
Yeah. Well, that one, that one is closed since. But if a restaurant were to go in there before that SUP, that would also be caught in that, in the 500 foot. If you look on the right side, to give you another sense about that. So that is where the barbecue truck is currently located on Business 121. And so if you look at 300 feet, you're looking at the 7-Eleven and the Shipley's Donuts. And if you extend it to 500 feet, you're picking up several other restaurants as well. Now, remember, this doesn't preclude them under the SUP scenario, but it would be additional notice requirements so that those folks would be able to come into council and express concern or support. So with that, I'm interested to see, we're interested to see if council thinks the SUP option is a good one. And if so, what, are you interested in expanding that level of notice requirements for the applicant?
It sounds like a good way to handle it to me. And I would like, I would go for the 500 feet.
Okay.
But I do think they do need to notify affected businesses.
I'm with Bob, but also Bennett, the property owner gets to deal with his tenants saying, what are you doing to me?
Yeah, I'd say try it. It sounds like it may be some complications with the, with the property owners and the tenant, but we can, we can work on it. We gotta try something.
Agreed.
Okay, I think we have direction. So counsel, I apologize for that long workshop, but those are all the items that we had for this evening.
So we ran the minutes at the regular council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break and we'll reconvene in five minutes. We'll call the meeting back to order. We are live again. Okay. And city manager, go ahead and start with the city council agenda for tonight.
So mayor, I think we are to the regular session, the visitor-citizen forum.
Okay. City secretary?
Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, standing at feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Mayor, we have received no comment cards and I do not believe we have any hands raised in order to speak.
Okay, proceed to the next item.
Consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor received no e-comment cards and we do not have any point of wishing to speak during consent.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. City secretary, if you would call roll.
I shall counsel mentor and ran the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protan Ferguson? Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all aye votes.
Okay. Then we'll go to the next item. Regular hearing.
Agenda item seven. Consideration of a franchise ordinance for the collection and disposal of residential garbage, refuge, yard waste, bulky waste, and contaminated commercial solid waste and collection and processing of residential and multifamily dwelling recyclables to allied waste systems, DBA with Public Services of Louisville. This ordinance will start a new 10-year contract transferring all aspects of the current franchise agreement and recyclable materials processing into one new contract and terminating the two previously separate contracts with an effective date of January 1st, 2021. The recommendation- The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. We'll have the city attorney read the orders.
This is a contract and exclusive franchise for collection and disposal of residential garbage, refuges, yard waste, bulky waste, and containerized commercial solid waste and collection and processing of residential and multifamily dwelling recyclables within the city of Louisville, Texas.
Okay.
I show councilmember Gilmore made the motion. Councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay. Next item.
Item eight. Consideration of an ordinance amending the fee schedule by amending fees for solid waste and recycling services, new residential sewer customers, and transported liquid waste, and by removing the late payment fee for a parking citation. Rates for solid waste and recycling services require updating. In addition, the new residential sewer customer fee and transported liquid waste fees amounts were incorrectly listed in the prior ordinance and the late payment fee for a parking citation is no longer a valid fee and should be removed from the ordinance. The recommendation is that the city council consider the ordinance as set forth in the caption above.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Here we go, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, city attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the fee schedule of the city of Louisville by amending fees for solid waste and recycling services, new residential sewer customers, and transported liquid waste, and by removing the late payment fee for apartments of citation, providing for repeatability and effective date declaring emergency.
Okay. City secretary, call the roll.
I show councilmember Jones made the motion. Councilmember Troyer seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to item nine.
Consideration of a resolution authorizing and ratifying a letter of intent signed by the city manager for the city to support the United Way of Denton County's application for emergency solutions grant coronavirus relief funding round two for homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing through a city contribution of funding in the amount of $500,000. The emergency solutions grant offers funding needed to continue the United Way's eviction prevention program. If the city council approves the resolution and if funding is awarded, an agreement with United Way will be brought back to the city council concerning the use of the contributed funds and other terms. The recommendation is that the city council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Uh, city manager, do you need to add anything else to this?
Certainly I can, mayor. So this was somewhat of an unusual situation where we had a grant application deadline. Uh, and so I did sign a letter of intent. Normally I would come to the council first. The situation is that the nature of the grant, it's a reimbursing grant. And so what is gonna happen, uh, you know, the payment has to be made upfront uh, and then there's a period to wait to get reimbursed. And so it really was not within the scope of the United Way or the social service agencies involved to be able to front that money. So really what the city of Denton and the city of Louisville have agreed to do is to uh appropriate that money if the grant is approved and so that those payments can be made upfront, uh, then reimbursement would occur. The city, uh, we would have an agreement that we would bring back to you where the city, um, we would agree to supply the money and then that money plus interest earnings would be returned to the city. Certainly the source of revenue that we would use for this is the money that uh originally came to the city uh through the CARES Act. That money actually paid for public safety salaries uh, and that freed up dollars uh that we now are um evaluating the use. And so this would be a, a potential temporary use for those funds, a percentage of those funds.
Is there any discussion or questions from the council? Okay, we'll move on. Uh, city secretary, call the roll.
Mayor, we need to have a motion on that.
Move to approve is presented.
Sorry, I'm ready to go home.
Now I'll do roll call. We have, I show, uh, Mayor Proton Ferguson made the motion and councilmember Jones seconded the motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. May, may I do the roll call?
Yes.
Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, go to item 10 now.
Consideration of a resolution extending the declaration of local disaster for public health emergency until 11:59 PM on December 7th, 2020. Ongoing evaluation of circumstances related to the virus and the updated recommendations of the CDC and the Texas Department of State Health Services indicate that the conditions necessitating the disaster declaration have and will continue to exist for a period extending beyond November 16th, 2020. The recommendation is that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, city secretary, call the roll.
I show councilmember Troyer made the motion. Mayor Proton Ferguson seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're down to reports. Um, city manager, we got the COVID update?
Uh, yes, sir. So I'm sure you're all quite aware of the fact that we're seeing an exponential growth in uh the number of positive COVID cases. Certainly in Denton County, uh, in Louisville, we're concerned about this. We have been spending time with all of the department directors uh exploring ways that we can improve the safety of our employees and of the public. Uh, we've done a number of things. Uh, you see all three of us sitting in a conference room, six feet apart, but wearing masks before because we work together regularly. We would not have done that, but we changed that. So we've really tightened up our use of masks. Uh, we are supplying N95 masks to more, a higher percentage of our workforce. Uh, we are stopping all training. So we recently had a training course, mandatory training course in the police department. And uh, one, one person was positive and that actually resulted in 14 total officers having to be quarantined. So we just can't do those things uh as we move through uh this resurgence of the, of the COVID uh virus. And so uh, I wanted you to be aware of that, that we are tightening our procedures internally. Also, I've spent quite a bit of time talking with both Stacy and Carolyn Booker about Thrive and the library. Certainly those two areas, I think, would be of most concern to the public uh if we were to change operations. But it is also an area of concern uh as far as exposure of both the public and of our staff. And so uh, what we will move to do on November 20th, which is this Friday, uh, at Thrive, we are gonna move to a members only. So people who've actually paid for an annual membership would be allowed. Uh, we are getting a lot of day pass admittance and we are concerned that that's causing a lot of the combat or competitive sports on the gym floor. And we think that's a major area of, of potential spread. Uh, so we need to move to no contact sports. So we will not allow the day pass admittance. Uh, masks will also now have to be worn throughout the facility. There are areas in Thrive right now that are mask free. Uh, if you're on a, a treadmill or a bike, or if you're over in the weight area, we have mask free zones. That's gonna go away. Uh, the only area that would be mask free is really people swimming in the pool. So we will make that change effective this Friday. As, as far as Thrive, or excuse me, as far as the library on Friday, uh, we are gonna begin to limit people, the number of people in the, in Hive, the Hive. Uh, so it'd be one person by appointment. They can stay up to two hours. So that will significantly reduce uh the exposure, potential exposures in Thrive. Our computers, the use of computers will be decreased. We have 26 now. We think we need to spread that out a little bit more and it'll be 14. So we plan to, to stay and try to continue to offer services at this level. However, as I'm sure you're aware, Governor Abbott actually has set a, a measure uh that if the hospitalization rate, in other words, the uh capacity rate in comparison to the actual hospitalizations, if that exceeds 15%, uh, some additional restrictions will occur in the state. So we feel that it would benefit us to match that. And so if we uh see that, that uh percentage be 15%, above 15% in our trauma service area, uh, we would basically go to appointment only uh for Thrive and for the library. So that is our plan today. Uh, as with many situations with COVID, as we've moved forward, we've had to make changes. So every day seems to be a learning experience. But again, we're doing everything we can uh to protect our employees uh and to protect the public. Just so you know, as of today, uh, that percentage, that rate is 14.39% uh for our trauma service area. So we're fairly close to perhaps having to go appointment only. So I wanted to make sure council was aware of, of these next steps that we will take. Uh, and if you have any questions, I'm glad to respond.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next is annual reports for crime control and fire services districts.
So we have always been required by law uh to provide uh this report to the city council. The state law requires that within 60 days of the close of the fiscal year that we have to uh report to the council the, the funds that have been expended uh in both crime control and the fire control funds. Uh, normally we've just done that by email, uh, but I felt that it might be time to just make sure this is getting better documented on an agenda. Uh, and so that's the reason you're seeing it as a report. The report is no different than what you've seen historically. I do think it's interesting when you go back and you read the report, um, how, you know, how much things we've been able to accomplish uh with the fire control and crime control reports. But I didn't really have any plan to go over these in detail with you unless you have questions. Uh, it is a legal requirement to follow with you.
Okay. Now, quarterly investments?
So we're available for questions on that. That's your normal quarterly investment report, which we are statutorily required also uh to follow with the governing body.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the uh comments from the uh city council. We'll start with the councilmember Troyer.
Nothing to report, mayor.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Thank you, mayor. I have a few items for the MCO Grand. Uh, acoustic jam, of course, continues on Fridays unless COVID puts a stop to that for some reason. But currently it's still scheduled for each Friday. Uh, we have an activity coming up um presented by the MCO Grand and Thrive called Paper Quilling Art Workshop. You're not familiar with paper quilting. It's the process of uh cutting different colored papers into very thin strips and then um pressing them together and coiling them up into different shapes. And you can make jewelry, you can make picture framing greeting cards, do advertising, give back. It's, you know, it's a decorative art. It goes back to, um, there's arguments that either goes back to China or it goes back to, I think, the 13th century. So, but it's an old art form. And uh, so it could be a very interesting workshop. Uh, Art Exhibits Answer Me This is an exhibition by local artist Jamie Gardner, and that continues through November 28th. And then starting on December 4th through January 2nd, we repeat the gift of art, which is an opportunity for artists who normally might not get um exposure to a broad audience to bring their arts and crafts to the MCO Grand and uh have them available for sale. So uh, look forward to seeing some of the interesting things people have. I've actually sold something at that event, so it's been good for me. Uh, and I recommend y'all visit and support your local artists. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna make one comment about the uh Thanksgiving holidays coming up. It's gonna be unusual around my house because I'll probably be by myself and uh maybe one or two people, but no, no big family deals. So it's gonna be different. Uh, but everybody be safe. Uh, councilman uh Gilmore?
Mayor, thank you. Hey, I wanted to give a shout out to um our parks team. On Friday, November 13th, the Texas Recreation and Parks Society announced their winners of the 2020 North Region Awards. Um, and our Play Louisville on Wheels program was recognized as an excellent in programming for recreation and aquatics. Um, it recognizes outstanding, an outstanding ongoing program that's been offered for two or more years. And the summary of the application that they put in there was that PLOW is an inclusive recreation program bringing play to those in Louisville that do not have the means to participate, participate in our programs or have limited access to parks and green space. So wanna thank the team out there for, again, uh, making sure that Louisville residents are getting some of the best things that Texas has to offer. So appreciate you guys. That's all I have, mayor.
Congratulations on that.
Mayor, this is Donna. Can I go back to my COVID report? I just realized something. I was thinking through what I said. I didn't explain this clearly enough.
Is it a negative comment?
No, it's, it's not negative.
Okay, go ahead.
When I talked about uh reaching that hospitalization rate of, of 15%, that's for seven consecutive days. I don't think I said that earlier. So it's not like we're gonna hit it one day and immediately um change our operating procedures. It has to be for seven consecutive days and that matches the governor's order. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that earlier. And the other thing I didn't mention, so, so I talked about Thrive and the library being appointment only. We'll be working with all the department heads and it's likely that we'll take all of the facilities appointment only at that point. Sorry.
Okay, councilmember Jones?
Uh, just wanna send a shout out to the staff, uh, our staff in both Denton for helping out uh United Way, helping people, keep people in their, their place uh of living. And uh, you know, it's nice to be able to do something like that in our city. You know, we do a, a lot of basic things, but this one is huge. And you know, we kinda had to think outside the box to get it done. So I just wanna thank the staff for the time that they, they put together to, to, to get that done.
Good. Thank you. Is, did Christian ever show up?
No, she did not.
Okay, that's all we have. Uh, do we have an executive session tonight?
We do not, mayor.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Uh, and we'll go, we'll call the uh, the roll on this.
I show councilmember Jones made the motion. Councilmember Gilmore seconded the motion. Councilmember Troyer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor, those were all I votes.
Okay. Uh, I've got another, there's something about the city attorney doing something here. Is it?
No. Oh, no, you're good. You're good.
Okay, uh, we are adjourned. Good night.
Good night.